I call this meeting to order. Honorable members of City Council, in accordance with Virginia City Code 2-21, and by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of Virginia Beach City Council at Tuesday, June 24, 2025, at 2:00 p.m., City Conference Room 2034, Building 1, Second Floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. The purpose of this special formal session is to conduct public briefings and City Council comments discussion as listed in the attached and published agenda. At the conclusion of the public briefings and City Council comments discussion, City Council will convene into a closed session where the following matters will be considered: Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel on Atlantic Park and election system; legal matters, actual or potential litigation, Atlantic Park Branch at All versus City of Virginia Beach and Holloway at All versus City of Virginia Beach; and also publicly held property in District 6; and personal matters, city appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, task force, and appointees. At the conclusion of the closed session, the City Council will reconvene into an open session for the purpose of certifying the closed session. This special formal session will be broadcast on cable TV, vbvirginiabeach.gov, and Facebook Live. Bobby Dyer. Okay, Mr. Denny, we're ready to move.
By Dan Peterson, Chair of the Virginia Aquarium Foundation, as well as the Treasurer, Buffy Barefoot. I'm going to give City Council an update on some of our partnership initiatives and also some additional information requested by Council regarding the financial stewardship and the charity foundation that's given the city. Dan Peterson will join us and kick off the presentation.
Welcome to both of you. And the other folks in the gallery that are joining. Thank you.
Good afternoon, honorable members of City Council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm Dan Peterson, Chair of the Virginia Aquarium Foundation, and I'm joined by Buffy Barefoot, our Treasurer. In addition, we have other board members in the audience: John Earn, Jane Purington, Carolyn Robertson, and Craig Grube. We're here to provide you an update on the progress we've made since our last presentation in August of 2024. As a quick reminder, while the Virginia Aquarium is a city-owned and operated facility, the Foundation's role is to support the mission through fundraising, community engagement, and various strategic initiatives. As always, our goal is to continue fostering a strong connection between the aquarium and the community through education, conservation, and scientific research. Over the past several months, we've made significant strides in a number of key areas. Today, we're excited to share the results, updates, and next steps. We look forward to your feedback and any questions you have as we continue our work for the benefit of both the aquarium and the City of Virginia Beach. Let me start with a snapshot of what the Virginia Aquarium means, not just to our community, but to the region and the Commonwealth of Virginia. We care for over 5,000 animals representing more than 250 species, from marine mammals and sea turtles to sharks, reptiles, birds, and hundreds of species of fish. We've been proudly serving the public since 1986, and over the years, the Virginia Aquarium Foundation has raised more than $100 million in support of this beloved institution. In fiscal year 2024, we welcomed over 620,000 visitors, making us the third-most-visited attraction in Virginia Beach. We're behind Busch Gardens and Kings Dominion.
Virginia.
Oh, I'm sorry. We are open 363 days a year, and none of this is possible without the support of over 1,000 dedicated volunteers who contribute more than 51,000 hours of service. We are supported by a robust board of 25 trustees and nearly 10,400 donors, all committed to our mission of conservation, education, and community interest. We drive over 3,000 jobs and contribute nearly $85 million in labor income to Virginia Beach. We often say the aquarium is "our" aquarium because it truly belongs to the people of Virginia Beach. It reflects our values as a premier coastal city, committed to protect our ocean, educating the next generation, and preserving what makes this community so special. I would be remiss if I didn't reiterate the Virginia Aquarium is the third-most-visited attraction in the Commonwealth. It represents Virginia Beach's commitment as a premier coastal city to protect the ocean and its inhabitants and to educate both our citizens and the millions of visitors who come here to learn about the importance of our environment. That mission is not only educational and conservation-focused, it's also deeply economic. Each year, the Foundation provides the city with an audited financial statement. That document outlines how our donor dollars are spent and how the Foundation supports the aquarium's operations. I know some Council members have asked for more detail. In the interest of transparency, we outlined a 10-year breakdown of our spending by category. This information is sourced directly from the audited financials and is sorted into the meaningful categories of capital purchases, animals and exhibits, education and outreach, research and stranding, general and administrative, and fundraising. While the $257 million economic impact speaks to the broader value of the aquarium, the next few slides will show you how private donor funding is deployed to keep the institution running, growing, and contributing to the city's bottom line. In summary, over the last 10 years, the Foundation has provided just under $41 million in cash supporting the operations of the aquarium. Now, I'm going to turn the floor over to Buffy so she can highlight the specifics.
Welcome, Buffy.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to be here. It's nice and cool in here.
That's where we like it.
We'll start with capital purchases. So, capital purchases include items over $5,000 and covers everything from new equipment to exhibits. Most significantly, this category includes Foundation's contribution to the south building's construction, which is a major investment in expanding and improving the aquarium's physical footprint. Also, it reflects our ongoing capital support the Foundation provides year-over-year. These are the behind-the-scenes investments that keep the aquarium safe, functional, and competitive. For example, exhibit upgrades, specialized veterinarian equipment for stranding, or vehicles to drive to schools. Over the last 10 years, this support totaled nearly $14 million in capital. Animals and Exhibits. Over the past 10 years, the Foundation has invested just under $4 million in animals and exhibits, a critical part of fulfilling the aquarium's mission to inspire conservation through engaging, meaningful experiences. This funding goes directly toward enhancing what the public sees. For example, a new species that sparks curiosity or immersive exhibits that educate and entertain. It includes thematic upgrades, interpretive displays, and exhibit infrastructure that ensures the Virginia Aquarium remains competitive with other major regional attractions. This investment reflects the public's expectation to continue to grow, evolve, and stay relevant. When we add something new, it drives return visitation, media attention, and community pride. These aren't just one-time costs as exhibits require refreshment and reinvestment to stay impactful. This $4 million ensures when guests walk through our doors, they experience something fresh, dynamic, and aligned with our conservation mission. Next, we'll talk about education and outreach. Over the past 10 years, the Foundation has invested nearly $9 million in education and outreach initiatives that bring mission to life every day. This investment represents tens of thousands of students impacted through classroom programs, field trips, and immersive science experiences. Many of these individuals are from underserved schools and communities who would otherwise not have access to marine science education. Our Foundation outreach fans bring programming directly into classrooms, spanning every ZIP code in Hampton Roads and beyond. This is how we make marine science accessible and ensures the aquarium's mission is not just stated, but experienced equitably in the community we serve. Research and Stranding. Over the past 10 years, the Virginia Aquarium Foundation has invested just under $8.2 million in research and stranding, fulfilling a critical public responsibility. It's important to remember that we are responsible for every marine mammal or sea turtle that strands on Virginia's coastline. Whether it's an entangled sea turtle, a sick dolphin, a deceased whale, our team responds, day or night, rain or shine, 365 days a year. 365 days a year. Last year alone, we responded to over 400 animals. This is highly specialized, resource-intensive work that few communities can manage. Thanks to the Foundation's investment, Virginia Beach doesn't just respond, we lead. We protect our coastline, we provide expert care to stranded animals, and we carry out this vital responsibility with professionalism, urgency, and compassion. Everybody's favorite topic, general and administrative. Over the past 10 years, the Virginia Aquarium has invested $2.9 million in GNA support to help sustain the aquarium's mission. These are the unglamorous but absolutely essential costs like maintaining our nonprofit status, ensuring financial accountability, supporting board governance, and covering institutional memberships such as AZA accreditation, which is critical to the aquarium's credibility and operation. It's the kind of support that doesn't always make headlines, but without it, none of the mission-driven work, education, conservation, animal care could happen. Fundraising. Over the past 10 years, the Virginia Aquarium Foundation has invested $2.9 million in fundraising to support the aquarium's mission. That investment has powered the relationship campaigns and events that bring in millions of philanthropic support from individual donors and corporations to foundations and legacy gifts. It what allows us to turn passion into revenue and revenue into impact. In the past 10 years alone, the Foundation has invested more than $40 million directly to support the mission of the aquarium. And over the course of our 40-year history, that total climbs to over $100 million. A remarkable legacy of a private investment in a public institution. I want to say that again, $100 million, private investment in a public institution. Thank you for your time and your interest in the aquarium, and now I'll hand it back over to Dan.
In our August 2024 briefing, the Foundation and in conjunction with the city made the following commitments. First, the Foundation conducted an asset valuation. Second, the city and Foundation partnered to conduct a structural assessment of our individual and joint assets. Third, we engaged a firm to assess the current operational model between the city and the Foundation. Fourth, the Foundation evaluated a lobbyist firm to engage. It's important to recognize the Foundation has spent over $500,000 in support of these efforts. I will now provide a detailed update as to the progress made on each of these core initiatives. Completed on March 19, 2025, the total value of the Foundation assets were determined to be just under $18.2 million. This is comprised of just under $16.3 million in assets related to animals and exhibits and just under $1.9 million in operational assets. This valuation was commissioned by the Foundation as part of our fiduciary responsibility as a nonprofit organization. If the city were ever to consider selling the aquarium or its operations, we would be legally required to ensure that the Foundation receives fair market value for all assets funded through charitable contributions. Failing to do so would constitute a violation of our federal nonprofit law and could jeopardize our 501(c)(3) status. This step was taken not only to protect the Foundation, but to ensure full transparency, legal compliance, and responsible stewardship of the donated funds entrusted to us since inception. At this time, I won't go into detail as it relates to the structural assessment as Deputy City Manager Ken Chandler will provide a detailed presentation on this topic next. With that stated, I would like to highlight some of our core assets are nearing the end of their useful life. Through additional investment by the Foundation and the city, we can extend their lifespan by eight to 10 years, which is approximately how long it will take to build a new aquarium. In partnership, the Foundation and the city engaged Canopy Strategic Partners in January of 2025. We recently received the initial findings from the Operational Efficiency Review, which identified an annual operating deficit of approximately $1.6 million. More importantly, the analysis concluded that the Virginia Aquarium is a well-run operation. This figure is consistent with the assessment of the city auditor as well as the Foundation, and it's really important to set the record straight because there has been much higher numbers incorrectly reported through various media channels. It's worth emphasizing that the Virginia Aquarium Foundation is not responsible for covering this operational deficit. Our role is to provide strategic philanthropic support focused on education, conservation, exhibits, and long-term capital priorities. As previously presented, the Foundation injects much more than this dollar amount on a year-over-year basis, and in 2024 alone, we supported the aquarium with just under $3 million. At the June— I'm going to talk about lobbying firms since you can follow along with your packets in front of you. At the June 18, 2025, Foundation Board Meeting, the Board unanimously approved engaging two lobbying firms, Commonwealth Strategy Group and RIVCO. The focus is to develop and implement a strategic plan for securing state funding enrichment. This marks the beginning of a multi-year, evolving effort that will require sustained advocacy, relationship building, and coordination. It is essential that the city's efforts in Richmond are aligned with this strategy to ensure we present a unified voice and maximize our potential for success. The Foundation is making this investment to help lay the groundwork for future capital support, but success will depend on a shared vision and active collaboration at every level. As we look ahead, it's clear that a bold, unified vision is essential. The Virginia Aquarium is a cherished community asset, but to remain relevant, competitive, and mission-driven, we must begin laying the groundwork now for its next chapter. This means re-engaging in strategic capital planning with clear priorities, phased goals, and a compelling story to take to the donors, funders, and the Commonwealth. The work we've done so far, valuations, assessments, and early advocacy, is just the beginning. Now is the time to align around a shared vision for the aquarium's future and commit to the kind of long-term planning and investment that this institution and this community deserves. I will now open the floor for any questions you all may have.
Any questions at all? Stacy.
Thank you very much for that presentation. And it must be a very important day because we had the honor of being in the presence of Miss Queen Neptune, the very first Queen Neptune, 51st Representative of the City in the Neptune Festival. So, again, congratulations and thank you for being here. I had the privilege of taking a tour, an extended tour of the aquarium not too long ago, and it was very educational for me. And one of the biggest things I've learned was that the aquarium is not the Virginia Beach Aquarium. The aquarium is the Virginia Aquarium. So, your initiative on getting state support—I think this is well-founded—that people throughout the state need to realize what the aquarium does, and it's just not a rainy-day amusement center, that they do a lot of research, they do a lot of education, and a lot of critical work in rescuing animals in distress. So, there's a rehabilitation center where there are animals needing attention before they can get released back out into the wild. And I believe that that is a statewide obligation, not just the Virginia Beach obligation. And I thank the Foundation for their role in that. Also, I just want to ask one question, and that is, is there any possibility of partnering with a university in this endeavor? Is that something you've considered?
It's absolutely something we've considered. It's something that we haven't explored in our operational model or assessment, but the Foundation would absolutely be in support of something like that.
Because I know that both ODU and Wayman Mary have extensive marine departments and might be an opportunity there.
That's a great thought. And to your earlier comments, we'll give you the exact report when it all gets completed in sort of the fourth quarter of this year. But one thing that was very eye-opening to me—and don't quote me on this, but it's somewhere around—it's like 48% of our attendees are coming from greater than an hour away, somewhere in that world. But that was very, very eye-opening, that a significant amount of attendees at the aquarium are not just from this greater area. Many of them are out of state.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, and thanks to all the aquarium team who are here today. I share in Mr. Cummings' sentiments about the enjoyment that we all share in the aquarium and the positive impact it has on our community, and I know that will be expressed further as the conversation goes on. I do have a couple of questions, and thank you for being here. Thank you for taking the time to provide leadership in our community in the many different ways that you do, and especially at the aquarium. I do have some questions about your assets, well, specifically about the Foundation's financials. You presented an analysis of the last 10 years of the Foundation's spending, but I'm wondering if you could provide a little bit more insight into the way the revenue is generated? And I'm particularly interested in, for example—I'm aware that much of the revenue generated that the Foundation captures arguably could be attributed to the city's operations, such as parking, rental, and events that occur in the city-owned and operated building, and part of the admission fees. So, could you share—am I missing any other captures? And then, what percentage of that spending is private sector philanthropy? And what section is sort of a recirculation of assets that are arguably city-managed and supportive assets?
So, very, very specific question, which is—it's a solid question. I would like to be exact in my numbers, and I can revisit City Council and give you those updates. Where the vast majority high-level, though, of our revenue stream is actually coming from is through partnerships. And so, we've got a revenue share with the adventure park. We've got a revenue share with the whale-watching and dolphin-watching. We have a revenue share with the coin machine where you stick the quarter in, and it mushes it. And then, there's a revenue share with the restaurant facility. So, that's more of—and then, the final one is photojacks.
Gift shop.
No, the gift shop is all city.
We need you at the microphone.
I can easily answer the question. If you open your packet there, there's an annual report. On the last page of the annual report, there's a pie chart, and it breaks down Foundation as well as city revenues in a graphic way, so you can see that.
Thank you. I think that's really important because—I'm not bringing it up to point out anything other than if we're going to unlock the type of partnership I think the Foundation envisions, private sector philanthropy is going to have to be accelerated.
Absolutely.
And it cannot be fueled by assets such as parking and events and the types of things that the Foundation—the assets and revenue the Foundation has basically been managing, and I appreciate that. But I have to look at the pie chart. I think we really need to have a better understanding about where the private sector in Virginia Beach and the region is in terms of their giving, not outside of elements like the parking and the concessions and events and things like that.
You bring up a great topic. And to go to the private sector—we're on the verge of actually engaging a firm to go to the private sector to assess what is the scope in the world of private funding we could receive. But we stopped that about two years ago when there was uncertainty around what the project is because you can't go to someone and ask them to give if we don't have a project. And based off of the advice with the firms that we've been dealing with, they've actually said that can act against you if you just go out there and say, "Hey, what will you give?" They need to know what they're going to be giving to. And so, that's part of our challenge. But the Foundation is poised and would absolutely support doing that type of analysis to determine what is the realm of possibility within this market of private donations that we could generate in support of a potentially new aquarium.
Fair. And I've got a few more questions and points, so just bear with me. I see colleagues are ready to go, but just give me a couple more minutes. Fair, but there's a sort of a chicken-and-an-egg scenario that happens here between private sector philanthropy and public sector support. In other words, I've heard—and I've actually heard from the Foundation— we can't ask our supporters for a leading gift because we don't know where the city is, and then the city is arguably saying, "We're not sure where the public participation is because we're not sure where the private sector leadership is." And so, we could sort of point fingers back and forth all day, but we have to find a way to break through that. And I've been sensing a lot of the direction being pointed toward the city in terms of what's our investment going to look like? It's a public investment. First, and I actually think the best projects are often led by— and I've witnessed—the best projects are often led by private sector philanthropic leadership. And I'm hopeful that we can unlock that type of partnership there. Or, let's certainly do it in greater partnership than we have in the last few years. And a couple more things, but—
Sure, sure. Thanks, Michael. Back to Stacy's point, I agree 100%. It is the Virginia Aquarium. You know, we'll say 50% of the folks visiting are from outside of the Hampton Roads market. The reality of it is, though, it's a City of Virginia Beach-owned asset. So, you know, it is going to take the Foundation coming to the table. We've proven over the past 40 years, we've got fundraising capabilities with over $100 million. So, it's going to take the Foundation, it's going to take the city, and the city's got to commit. And it's also going to take the Commonwealth to get it done.
That's true, and I would just encourage you to do a historical review of the types of investments the Commonwealth has made in assets like this across Commonwealth Virginia and then place that in scale with the type of public investment that we're talking about. And I don't know—that—I hope you can prove me wrong and show me where I am wrong in my analysis here, but I haven't seen the Commonwealth make those types of major leadership investments in facilities like this. So, I'd like to—so, I don't—and I'm saying that not to brand anyone's parade, but I want to have a realistic conversation about where we're going to go here. want to have a realistic conversation about where, where we're going to go here, and that we're not hoping and dreaming for something that we don't have really evidence-based examples of where this Commonwealth has done that or would be willing to do that. And finally, just a question about the assets that you talked about, Mr. Peterson, in terms of what the fair market value, and if you had to, if an alternative management or ownership model were explored, you would have a responsibility or lose your federal tax status? I'm curious, if you could point me to any particular example or, or where that came from, because as I mentioned, I think one of our previous discussions, I have some experience in nonprofit with collection-based nonprofit organizations, and there, there are ways, I mean, I don't, frankly, it kind of landed as if we're sort of throwing a roadblock. I'm just going to speak plainly on exploring models, and I understand that's your point of view. I actually would just submit that I'm not sure that statement as presented was factually accurate.
Well, it would have to be, it would have to be owned, the assets would have to be owned or leased at a fair market value. And that's coming from legal advice from Tom Bronson with Williams.
I would just suggest, I would just suggest there are other legal, there, there are other legal perspectives on that, on that matter. Those I don't agree, but I'm sure that there are, so maybe we need to have a conversation about that.
Happy to do that. Spend a lot of time.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer, then, Josh.
Thank you for the presentation, and I know this has been a long conversation to Councilmember Berluci's point. The MOU and the history of the relationship between the foundation and the city has been kind of murky and kind of confusing. I remember when we initially got briefed on this, a lot of the emphasis, the urgency was on the animals and the, the tanks and the, the life of the tanks to ensure that we're taking good care of these living assets. So I'm curious, can you help me understand how we got from the urgency of we need to move really quickly so that we can make sure that the animal life is preserved and that the tanks are sound, to kind of, you know, we've got this time to explore and make kind of patchwork adjustments here and there? And I know that the number initially that we were presented was multiple millions of dollars, and am I right in saying now you're saying it's only 1.6 million that's needed to, so will you help me understand?
Dr. Chandler's going to give you, there's a full, specific presentation just on the structural assessments. At this time, I don't know if we want to share, and this is the publicly share, what that figure is. There's figures for the city and the foundation, and you all, we partnered in that study, so you all have that information. Dr. Chandler's going to be updating you all.
I think the 1.6 may be an operating number that you're referring to that was in the presentation.
So then, as a.
That's, that's the operational deficiency that's getting supported by the, by the city on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you. And then one final question. So to clarify, so going forward, at least with this half of the presentation, are you saying that for this to work, it would take the city, the foundation, and state support? That's the model that you're working with?
That's the model that we're in the process of evaluating right now.
Okay.
And that's why we're engaging the lobbying front to start to, to Mr. Berluci's earlier comments, let's start to define what is that potential realm of possibility with state funding.
Okay, if state funding is not an option, that's going to be part of your evaluation, how you always move forward without that?
It's going to be part of our evaluation, because it's a partnership between the city and the foundation. So this isn't on the shoulders of the foundation, just for clarity.
This, when we talked about Canopy Strategic Advisors and the operational models that they're working on, they're called maybe halfway through their assessment, and so that's going to be completed, that study's going to be completed, call it in the fourth quarter of this year, and we'd be presenting that back to city council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Verfut, Mr. Peterson, and everybody in the audience who works for and volunteers for our aquarium, I just, I like, thank you, because over the last generation or two, it's been, it's been, it's been something that is, is, has been incredibly important for, for families, for visitors, and it's just, it's a tremendous facility. And, and I want, I want to get that out first before I say what's next. And, and I'm going to do it lovingly, as lovingly as I possibly can, considering AC went out in my house and in my car today, so maybe it's not the best day, but, 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 I mean, what I want to do is just kind of paint my experience over the last two and a half years with this issue, so that, so that, and I know we've talked before, and I know others have, you know, been following this, but when we, we were first seated as council two and a half years ago, we had six new people, five, five of us have never served before, and it was a difficult budget year, and, and, and we were presented with a $200, $300 million kind of, you know, big grand vision. And, and it was, it was a wonderful vision, it is a wonderful vision, and it was one that I think was originated back, what, 15-plus years ago, when economic times were different, and, you know, things were, we, we didn't have the, the various pressures that we have now on our capital program, our roads, our stormwater and all of that. So, so for us to hear $200, $300 million was kind of like a deer in headlights. And, and we talked about that, and I know that there was some reworking of, of what that, you know, plan ultimately ended up might entail. There was some talk about phasing it, and I know that we've got, I think there's a $70 million placeholder or somewhere in that neighborhood at our capital program to, to talk about moving the critical, right, the, the seals, the sharks, and the turtles, right? So when I see that moving to a different part of the property, what I'm not seeing is what's going on with the rest of it, and so $70 million fixes this, but it doesn't necessarily address the rest of it. And, and so I, I think we were, and we were as responsible as we possibly could have been, understanding and appreciating, I mean, everybody's contribution to this asset. I mean, we've, you've got people whose names are on the wall at the aquarium, people, companies who have contributed over the decades, and, and those are really meaningful contributions of both time and dollars. So I, I don't, I, I don't for a minute want to discount any of that, but given our new realities and given some of what we heard about the health of the animals, like Councilwoman Rouse was talking about, you know, being, being as responsible as we possibly could have to evaluate possible investment and partnerships from private industry, from people who have managed and, and acquired and worked alongside foundations with aquariums, successful aquariums in North, in North America, I, I feel, and I don't, I, I'm just going to say it out loud, I just kind of feel like we were, there was some resistance there for us exercising what I thought was our fiduciary duty. And, and I get that, people have thoughts and feelings and emotions about an asset that means that, not, you know, it means an incredible amount to not just our citizens, but our schools and the partnerships that you have up and down the East Coast with the strandings, and I was watching, I was trying to cool down because I was like, my car was really hot, but I was back there watching. So, I mean, I, I just, you know, we, we sat down and we talked with private industry. We, we asked them to kind of see, okay, well, how can, how can they come in alongside and make sure that the, the foundation's mission is, is enhanced and not, not detracted from? And, and to Councilman Berluci's point, I mean, the last investments that I saw from the Commonwealth were in the magnitude of like no more than $5 million.
If you're lucky.
If you're lucky, right. So I, I just, I want to make sure that you understand and that you know, I believe in both of you, because you're both amazing people, and so are the people sitting in the seats. We're here to help, and I would love to be able to get to a place, and I think the council would, I don't want to speak for everybody, to, to, to make sure that the aquarium remains an attraction for people to come, a standalone attraction, or if it's a rainy day that they can go visit it. But I, what I, what I, I'm uncomfortable with, and I haven't seen it lately, but the, the initial kind of knee-jerk reaction of us, what I feel, using, using our best judgment and trying to work with, work, work with everybody in the foundation the whole time to try and make for a better outcome, and what is, one that is more sustainable over the next 20, 40, 50 years. And I, what is the aversion to, to trying to have some sort of a private partner come in and, and take a, take a long, solid look at these assets and seeing how they can help? I, I don't see very many cities in the business of owning and managing aquariums these days. And, and, and I recognize the contributions from, from our philanthropic and our volunteer community and everything that goes along with it. We're trying to help make it better, and, and I appreciate everything you've said today, but I just, I, I want to make sure we get there as opposed to, you know, somewhere where we're uncomfortable with investment going forward.
With Canopy, who we've hired to look at operational models, one of those models we set is a third-party investor coming in and running the aquarium. So we didn't take that off the table when we engaged this, and this was a joint engagement. I said, bring, bring back what's the best operating model. Tell us what that is. And so that's what they're in the process of evaluating. But I think there's a major challenge, and there's been some discussions around just the overall building infrastructure and the cost to repair all of that. Real banker term here, the number's known number, and they're not going to number for a private entity to come in. So we do have private partnerships, and the foundation is currently engaged with four or five private partnerships, just not to the scope of, of what the city was looking at.
Let's go, Worth and Cash.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, thank you, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Verfut, for all, everything you do. I know this has been the last couple of years, we've had some very frank discussions and discoveries, and I do think that this is all very necessary to, to get us where I think we can go. So if you could pull up on the screen the foundation and city structural assessment, because I think that can give us maybe 50,000 feet, because that, I think it went out during the presentation, and I think that's the key here, because we'll hear from Dr. Chandler here in a minute about the first part of this. So this is where we are today. We'll hear from Dr. Chandler here about the, the short-term fix here, if you will, and that is to shore up the current status of the exhibits. And this first building, you know, this, this is the 40th year, I believe, 1985, this is the 40th year, so all structures and properties and buildings need to be evaluated and maintained, and I think we definitely are in that stage at this point. So the first part here, we'll hear from Dr. Chandler in a minute about that, and then notice the word estimated eight to 10 years. If we go forward with what we're going to hear about soon, it gives us about eight to 10 years to figure out a longer-term, bigger fix that may be in the multi-millions, hundreds of millions of dollars. But that's an eight-to-10-year study and way to design and fundraise and pay for all of this, because this is, as everyone said, this is the Virginia Aquarium. This is our shining star, and not only, at least on my watch, I, we can't let it down. So I, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but it's, again, I think a one and a two-phase, back to Councilwoman Rouse, this is a one, the first phase we'll hear about in a minute, that'll get us over the hump to immediate situation, and then we can focus on a longer term. If that's, here to comment on that, is that fairly accurate?
That's, that's very accurate. It's 100% accurate. When you're asking about the, the urgency, there is still a sense of urgency.
Yeah, so Councilwoman Rouse, you had talked about the timing earlier, had commented on it. That hasn't changed. I think what's changed is we did additional work to figure out what we could do to repair, just to put Band-Aids on it, and then what the timeline is to actually construct the three main exhibits, but materially, nothing has changed.
Hey, Cash.
Thank you for your presentation. Really appreciate it, and, and thank you for everyone being in the audience, thank you for the work that you do at the aquarium. I would say this, that as new council members, myself and Mr. Cummings, I can only speak for myself on this, going on a tour of the aquarium was exciting. It was an attraction that we want to continue, right? And so we came in, I came into council, and I realized that there was some tension at the table. I, I'm hoping that with new council, new blood, that we can move the conversation along, because I love the aquarium. And so as I'm with the people, listening to the people, the people would like to continue what we're doing at the aquarium, because it draws different people from different states, Title I schools, get to take advantage of going to the aquarium and learning, and lives are being changed because of the aquarium. Now I'm going to speak on the people's behalf. I, I'm not sure of the mechanics of the finances, but I will tell you, if it brightens a child's day, then we need to put all of our resources together to make this the city of Virginia Beach, or the state, whatever we need to do, I'm committed to doing it for the aquarium because it brightens kids' faces, right? And they are the future. So I will say this in closing, that I'm so grateful that you gave me that tour, former council member, John Earn, thank you for your passion, you transmitted that to me, and, and I'm sitting there looking at the jellyfish and, right, so it's brightening my life, and so I wouldn't transfer that to the community. And so whatever we need to do as a city, city of Virginia Beach, we need to keep that asset alive and vibrant. Yes, I understand that there is some, some tension here, but I'm not sure what it's from, maybe because of, I haven't been on council, but I can tell you once I visit, I haven't been on council that long, but I can tell you when I visit the aquarium, my heart leaps. And so I'm a guy that is, oh, go get it, right? There's money out there, is there, if there's money for the dome, there's money for the aquarium. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Amelia.
Just would like to thank you for your presentation, both of you, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Verfut. I'd like that you mention the three-legged stool of the foundation, the city, and the state. And it would be important to really emphasize that research and training, which doesn't happen anywhere else. We have, I remember when the whale situation, how very organized that. So we all play to your strengths of what you're bringing to the table. There are possibilities that the state will begin to look at it, because it's not just Virginia Beach. And even getting things out, the marketing, to all the other cities, all along the areas, so people rally daddy, because we know, and some people who come from out of our Commonwealth know, so we need everyone, every delegate, every senator to know your story. I think that will help. So I'm glad that you're making a three-legged stool instead of just the two. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? No, that was great. I'll hold my comments later after Dr. Chandler.
Speak this way.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Dr. Kent Chandler's going to give city council a overview, the city council in the public, the overview of the interior and the exterior study assessment results, and also the need for funding to move forward with making these needed repairs, and also to discuss a timeline for when we need to start to proactively start planning towards constructing a new building for the seal, the tark, the seal, the shark, and the turtle exhibits.
Welcome.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, of course, our Virginia Aquarium Foundation Board members and officers who are here present, our staff. Really appreciate the opportunity, for a few minutes of council's time, to actually talk a little bit about two studies in particular relative to the interior and the exterior of the Virginia Aquarium. So our briefing purpose here is going to be to highlight the consultant's findings from two separate studies, of course, one dealing with the interior or the exhibits and the exterior structural of the Virginia Aquarium. I want to talk to you about a proposed scope of repairs, cost estimates, and legal obligations under the memorandum of agreement between the city and the foundation. Also, consider a staff action plan for repairs and cost and appropriation. Think about a historical context of the Virginia Aquarium. The facility is 40 years old, and we've celebrated a partnership and a venue. And I remember some years ago, before we had passed, former Mayor Clancy Holland, who was one of the founders, kind of talked about this being founded and coming together to be the venue for the shoulder season. When people weren't going to visit the beach, we had something else that they would be able to do. And we've now celebrated a 40 years of doing that. However, as the song would say, does anything last forever? And normally, the answer is no. So there are three studies that were initiated. One, of course, is dealing with the sustainability in terms of the interior exhibits, another, the external structure. We'll talk about those briefly today, and you've heard a little bit about the operational model. Terms of the core exhibits, including the seal, shark, and turtle exhibits, they are 30 years old, and they have exceeded the design lifespan, which is normally about 25 to 30 years. The original exterior, that is 40 years old, and we've only really worked to sustain that over the years, like we do all of the facilities that we own through periodic maintenance. As a rule of thumb, in terms of capital assets, normally, there's a life expectancy of about 20 years, and that's normally followed with either major renovation or new construction. And that's often financed with obligation debt. A little deeper dive into the studies in particular, and we'll really talk a little bit more about the first two. The interior infrastructure study, of course, was, as you've heard mentioned here, was facilitated by the Virginia Aquarium Foundation, and that represents the relationship that we have with them in terms of fundraising and actually working with the animal habitats and establishing and purchasing animals and exhibits. That study was conducted by Animal Underwater Services, and it focused on the interior conditions of those exhibits, the key ones, the seals, shark, and turtle habitats. The exterior infrastructure study was led by Public Works Department through one of our contracts, Mosley Architects, and they had their sub Thornton Tomasetti, who actually did the focal work. Here, they looked at the condition and longevity of the building's exterior and foundational structures. As we mentioned earlier by the chairman and the treasurer of the foundation, the operating model study is one that is currently underway, and as you know, that's being conducted by Canopy. A lot of participation on that between city and the foundation. And of course, it's been mentioned, that is expected to conclude and wrap up by the end of this calendar year, 2025. So we should anticipate some information coming forth from the foundation for us to kind of understand and digest around that time of the new year, 2026. Going further now into the interior exhibit study, and again, this was actually put together by Animal Underwater Services. And we're going to just hit some of the hot points because we, again, we appreciate council's time and and won't take you through laborious studies. But the purpose and key findings, the purpose here was to review and address current conditions, expected lifespan, and expected or recommended interventions. Key takeaway from this study, timely repairs and proactive maintenance are crucial to avoid early failure, and that means failure of systems, failure of the aquatic marine life, the habitat, those things included. Think of a summary of the report, all the exhibits here, and again, the key ones, the seal, shark, and turtle require prompt attention. An immediate strategic plan for repair must be implemented to extend the current lifespan and prevent failure. We can see here, long-term strategy to address, full replacement is needed, of course. However, with the repairs that we're talking about here, we're actually buying a little time, approximately eight to 10 years. And again, that's assuming that we actually do make the repairs that we'll talk about in just a second. Now, on the interior repair cost, and again, this represents a partnership between us, the city, and the foundation. We're talking about a project on this side of the coin, $8 million. Typical exhibit habitat ratio cost, and that's based on the memorandum of agreement, the city's share of that would be 40% or $3.2 million. The foundation's portion of that, a little bit more of the line share, 60%, $4.8 million. Now, let's dig a little side on the other side of that coin, the exterior structural study. Again, this was Mosley Architects, and the focal point was their sub who did the work, Thornton Tomasetti. Here, as we talk about the purpose and the findings, this was an on-stight structural conditional assessment of the Virginia Aquarium. And what the study recognized is concrete deterioration, and you see all the elements of concrete deterioration here, cracking, sprawling, delamination, active leaking in the cracks, I won't read them all, corrosion and deposits from internal reinforced rebar. What's key is that next bullet there, separation of exterior precast concrete wall panels from the structure itself. Again, facility is 40 years old, understood. The repairs recommended here, crack injection, you see patching repairs, rebar cleaning, replacement of the roof membrane for the seal tank, and precast separation walls to repair that as well. I think an important thing to mention there is the fact that with this exterior and the initial assessment that they've done, we're not sure if there might be some other things that we'll uncover once we kind of get inside on the structural piece. So this is what we know now from the initial or preliminary review, maybe some other things that we may discover once we get inside. Taking a look at the repair cost on this side of the coin, this one is 100% city. If you think about it, just like all the other facilities that we own and operate as the city, they normally are our capital responsibility. You've heard this figure, 1.6 million here, 100% city. And of course, there is no cost share with the Virginia Aquarium Foundation. Let's go to the next slide. Total repair cost for the entire project, and this now combines the interior and the exterior of the project cost, about $9.6 million. As we've chatted before, just in the previous slides, the Virginia Aquarium Foundation's total cost of that is 4.8 million. And again, that represents the 60% for the interior responsibilities from the memorandum of agreement with the city. If you drop down to the bottom now, we're looking at the total cost for the city in terms of both the interior and exterior. The interior, again, is a repeated figure that you've seen just a slide or two ago, 3.2 million, 40% of that cost share, as we remind us. And then the exterior, as we've mentioned, is 100% ours. That's the 1.6 million for a total of 4.8 million. Next slide, please. So as we talk about the planned repairs, they are critical, but as we've kind of noted before and hinted in the previous presentation, they're not the final solution. The immediate repairs for the seal and shark and turtle exhibits are needed. The exterior structural repairs work to expand the habitat and standard facility operations as we know it right now. The interior exhibit repairs are expected to have an extended life expectancy of eight to 10 years. It is our hope that on the exterior side of the coin, that we can buy just about that same amount of time to the best of our ability, so we can actually confirm, you know, some of the other things that we may have to deal with on the exterior, once we get inside and see what's happening there. All the repairs that are noted here represent and realize that we've exceeded the useful life, and we can't necessarily just sustain by not doing anything else. The underlying aging infrastructure issues that are challenging us now continue to challenge us by the day. We think about the state of the Virginia Aquarium. The current state, of course, recognizes the exhibits, the exhibits and the facilities require the development, not just development, but execution of a long-term plan for replacement. We must begin long-term facility replacement that recognizes that we've reached the useful life of the interior and exterior, that repairs only extend the operational life right now for eight to 10 years. And of course, deferring planning or repairs, we risk facing future failure without a viable path forward. Go to the next slide, start talking about the plan or the pathway forward. Design and funding request, if we're talking about laying the groundwork for replacement of that facility, and again, this is not the $300 million picture, this is just the repair piece and really working on an element that would take care of the major exhibits that we've talked about, sharks, seals, and turtles. We've had a figure when we talked about the master plan a couple of years ago, I think we talked about phase two. I know the foundation has talked about another aspect of a sustainable building to the tune of about $78 million. I think that's all in the mix and still points to where we are here. So to proactively address, you know, the futuristic aspect of just sustaining those three exhibits, the major core ones, we are talking about the administration making a proposal for council's consideration in your next budget cycle of a $12 million appropriation, and that would be to design a facility, again, that deals with those three habitats of about $120 million. And I'd just be mindful, as we know, with our capital program, most things come into the CIP on the tail end of the year, and then they work their way over five years till actually being funded. And you normally fund your CIP for the budget year that you're in. In this instance, we're actually talking about an appropriation that would be loaded in year one. If it existed in the current CIP right now, it would be in year two, coming up for funding next year in the budget cycle. This represents a first step in terms of a long-term solution and also helps us maintain continuity of animal care, facility structural sustainability, and of course, a quality guest experience that our residents and visitors have always had. Based on industry standards, planning process, or the steps involved regard planning, design, permitting, construction, and then the opening of the facility. What's key here is, as we've mentioned a few times before, if we're doing the repair work, we're going to buy ourselves probably eight to 10 years, hopefully. If we're talking about new facility design and construction through this process, that's a seven-year process to complete. So there's not a lot of time or leeway there. Delaying design funding delays the entire timeline, and without any investment, we won't have any type of facility prepared to sustain these habitats moving forward. Next slide, please. If you look at the terms of span, in terms of development, you have a seven-year plan here, if you will. You see funding, and this would be, again, 2026. You see design, team selection, followed by concept design and A and E, building, actual construction, and you see that's a lengthy period of time there, a couple of years. And then to occupy it, because once the facility is built, staff have to go in and operate the systems, bring them up to speed, you have to transfer animals and make sure everything's functioning. And then you're talking about an opening of January 2033, which seems like it could be a long time away, but, I mean, the gun goes bang, and that process really starts almost tomorrow. In terms of future next steps, we talked about a couple of numbers here, and we talked about the 1.6, and that was for the exterior repairs. Let's talk about repair cost here. And with that 1.6, we actually have that already existing in the current CIP for maintenance of the aquarium. So we won't be needing an appropriation for that, taking care of us there. However, what the administration would plan to do on the repair piece, and we'll talk about the interior, and that's that cost share that we have in our relationship with the foundation of $3.2 million, we would actually look to bring ordinance for appropriation of $3.2 million to get that steady piece underway in July or August of this year, so within the next couple of weeks or so. City Council will be briefed again on the consultant's findings of that operating model. That's the third study that we mentioned in the beginning of this presentation that's being led by the Virginia Aquarium Foundation, by Canopy Strategic Partners. That study, again, will wrap up November, December of this year, so we're probably looking at the early part of the new year, 2026, to bring you the results of that. Okay, and with that, I appreciate your time. We're going to pause for questions.
Stacy, get it rolling.
Thank you very much, Dr. Chan.
Question for you. Is the foundation, do you know if the foundation is able to meet their obligation for their share of the improvements or repairs and improvements to the interior facilities?
I'm looking over here, Councilman, I'm getting a thumbs up, and we've already had some prior conversation, probably about a month or so ago. Yes, they are ready to go.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Josh?
Just a couple of quick questions. I saw on the summary of the consultant studies, the operating model study, I know it's facilitated by the Virginia Aquarium Foundation to have the support of the council. I want to make sure that that is a truly objective study, that we are, we are truly looking at all operational models, especially considering that, you know, there's, the foundation and the operational support one another and are hand in glove in some, some respects in terms of how the foundation is operating. So I just, I want to make sure that that we've got an objective and a real look at that. I know a lot of what we've been talking about so far has been replacement costs and 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 the cost to, you know, to to bring, to to bring the assets to to standard and and have them last. But I, you know, I mean, I I don't know that we would be here right now if it weren't for maybe some adequate capital reserves that that would have potentially gone to replace some of these facilities. And and understanding, of course, that's getting complicated, and if there's lots of dollars, and and nobody could have imagined how much it might may might have cost now in today's dollars. But but anything we do going forward has got to adequately address the the capital reserve component. And and I just, you know, I'm I'm sensitive about the level of investment that we're contemplating in this facility. It's certainly worthwhile, but and and it is certainly a community benefit, but I we just got to get this right.
We're going to go to Patrick and then Robert.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as regard to the canopy work, and Dan, I'm going to say some things. Sam, if you need to come and clarify for the foundation side, please feel free to. As regard to the canopy work, Canopy is more than capable of giving us a sense of various operational models that exist, right? The hard part, I think, Canopy is going to have is determining what model works for the city of Virginia Beach, because there are all different kinds of ways that aquariums and zoos are operated in America and around the world, and a lot of them really depends on what the community wants at the time, you know? And sometimes it evolves, involves multiple times along the way as well. So they can give us their research and information about the model that they see, but to determine what is best for Virginia Beach is going to require the city council and the Aquarium Foundation. So if it's for to, if it's, if it's to evolve in any one shape or form or stay the same, it's going to be a deliberate act on both of these bodies, the council and the foundation, to determine, should it stay the same or should it evolve? We'll get you the information, and but then it'll be up to the council and the foundation to kind of determine how best they want to process that information. Dan, is there anything you want to add to that? Is that accurate? And then you probably would have to come to the microphone.
Not, um...
Yep.
Nice job, Ken.
Always coming up, I just kind of feel like we've been talking about this for two and a half years, and we have at least some momentum in terms of direction that we were about to go in.
And then we kind of held back, and now here we are, two and a half years later. So I I just, I don't want to feel like we could have, we could have been already down this road already and and started fixing it. But now, instead, we got all these studies and, you know, it just, it just seems like it's kind of walking through mud right now, if that, if that doesn't make any sense to you.
No, no, it makes, I I understand. And some of the studies that were asked to be completed, you all asked us to do them, so we were just trying to do what you all told us. One thing I've asked Cynthia to make note of is have David with Canopy Strategic Partners, if you don't mind, I could have him reach out to you directly and just make sure that the report that he prepares and provides to the foundation council is going to meet your needs. Because one, one thing that would be a... Because one, one thing that would be unfortunate for everybody, all parties, is if we worked on this report for an entire year and a lot of time and energy and resources have gone to it. And then what's presented is not a working viable document for either party. That's, that's a failure. So council member, if it's okay with you, I'll have him reach out, you know, directly to you and, and talk with you about the work that's being conducted.
Hey, Barbara.
Well, you know, I say what I always say. We really have to look at the total of everything. And I think if we just pick a project here and a project there, and we're not looking at the totality, we're not being quite reasonable with what we're looking at. We just recently established a major projects fund. And I think mentioned in that, it was also probably the aquarium was just sort of an afterthought. I think we had four major projects, and I can only think of three. Lita and the courts building and West Neck Road. And what was the other one?
It was Indian River, Indian River Road, the courthouse, Lita, and the aquarium.
Well, the aquarium was an afterthought, I think, from things that I saw. But I really think if we're going to be looking at all of these projects, we've really got to keep the totality in mind. And one that I keep reading different things about the courts, and I'm not sure what that's going to be. The judges, we were just reading something about the escalators and the elevators. But then there's also the ADA requirement. And we really don't have a total, but somebody told me that it was probably going to be another one of those $80 million things. But we know the Lita is estimated at $82 million. And now this looks like it's coming in at about that. We really do have to look at the total picture here. Or we're, we're not, not really addressing this as we should. I don't think we can look at these individually. But we did just have this major projects fund and with the additional half percent on the meal tax. So if we could kind of look at all of it. But then, you know, we just got this new plan for an, an expansion of Innovation Park, which is going to be another $100 million in infrastructure to put in the roads for that, if we're going to do that. We seem to be off in different aspects. And I, I think somehow or other, it's going to be up to the council to pull this all together and see what's reasonable and what, what we can do and what we can't do. It's getting a little out of hand.
Okay, Jennifer.
Yeah, that's the word that I keep thinking of. It wasn't reasonable, but it was feasible. So if we look at realistically what we can and can't do. And I'll just say, for me, the, you know, I appreciate the aquarium. So it's not, I'm not looking for a guaranteed outcome. It's just I want to see where the information leads us. And I think some of the pressure has been, it's a feeling like we have to land on one way or another, as opposed to, well, what information do we have? And what makes the best sense for me, ultimately for the animals? If we're saying we have to repair this, and it's going to be $80 million just for a few years, let alone what are the next 30 years going to look like or 50 years? So what's actually feasible? And just as a critique of, of us, on slide six, it says timely repairs and proactive maintenance are crucial to avoid early failure. And I can't think of many times where we've been proactive. And I can't think of many times where we've been on time with capital projects. Most times they're delayed, or we're behind, or we're underfunded. So I'm looking at this, and what we're talking about are living animals that are ultimately going to deal with the outcome of our decision. So for me, as we're having a dialogue between the foundation and the council, that for me, I just want to put my concern out there, is the priority. What realistically can we do to ensure we're preserving the longevity of these tanks and these lives? That's where my position is, not one outcome over the other, apart from these tanks are maintained and it's a feasible path forward.
Yes, Stacy.
Okay. And I agree with you, Councilwoman Ross. I think that was very eloquently put. And I think that of our major projects that we have, we do need a Lita, and I agree with that. But that's, you know, that's something that isn't in existence now. And, and the other Indian River Road, again, needed project. But we own this aquarium. And we, we have to provide a house for the fish. We cannot ignore the need here. This, we've been, by grace, we've been given an additional 20 years over the useful life of this project. And we're up against the wall right now. So kicking the can down the road or studying another way to get around it is not really a viable option. We really need to address this immediately. We need to get on the road, down the road with this project because we own it, we have to have a house for the fish. And there's no other alternative, there's no other immediate alternative. Talking about spending $80 million down the road, we can, we can talk about that more. But the, the, these improvements that need to be done now to give us the time to make those decisions is not a viable option. The, the other, you know, the courthouse, again, we, we've kicked that down the road, and we are really up against the wall on the improvements to that courthouse. We can't, we can't delay those any longer. So those two things have to be our number one, in my opinion, need to be our number one priority because we own them. We have an obligation to bring them up to snuff, and the consequences are dire. So they have, in my opinion, they need to take precedent over the other things in this major, major project funding.
Your work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to follow up on that question and conversation and discussion, Mr. City Manager, the bill payer for the Virginia Aquarium is both the general fund and the tip fund, or is it just one of the, both?
I think historically it's been the general fund. Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's been, Joe, I don't think it's been. I think historically it's been the general fund, yeah.
See, my point here is...
I would say currently with the projection on the tip, there is no capacity in the tip to absorb something of magnitude for this.
I agree, and that's kind of my point is, because we do talk about projects. We have Rudy Park, we have Reimagining Atlantic Avenue as things that are already in the budget that we may be able to save some money or something. I know it's not going to match $80 million, but tip fund is a potential source.
And just want to say...
Because that's what the tip funnel is designed for, major resort projects.
And just want to say, $80,000 for this building is the low end. It's probably more to the 120. And that's why Dr. Chan was really prefacing that. It's probably in the, we're going to probably ask in the next budget for $12 million design number, because that's typically around 10 to 15% is the design number for the ultimate cost of the building. And we're just kind of taking it in mind as well. It may be 80 today, but by the time we get five years out to put it out to bid in construction, we're talking about inflation and things like that.
And can the private sector help, help us get there?
Traditionally, what has happened is, once we were able to get the ball going with design, the Aquarium Foundation has been able to get philanthropic support. They, I think, probably 40, if not 50% of the south building was generated through philanthropic support. And to Mr. Belucci's point, this one is a totally different animal because we're talking about 80 to 120 million dollars. Can the public, can the private sector give 60, 50, $40 million in Hampton Roads? That's what, that's one of the things I think the Aquarium Foundation said they're starting to investigate now.
Okay, anybody else familiar?
Yes, this is why it is important, as I mentioned, that three-legged. Because obviously, just coming from our Hampton Roads, it's not going to cut it. There's a lot maybe we need as a council to actually have a closed session looking at the major projects that Councilwoman Henley mentioned, the severity of the whale and shark and so forth. Because at the beginning, about two years ago, that was brought up to us. And everybody was worried not having the whales and sharks out there, as well as relocating them while all this repaired and maybe losing some of those assets. So we need to come back to the table, do a closed session, and prioritize what is our immediate need. And this one, of course, is very important as you're looking at life instead of just structure.
Amelia, I appreciate it. Mark, I don't think that would qualify for a very closed session.
There are elements of it that might, but, but the prioritization of the expenditures of money is an open, is an open session discussion.
And, and Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, the major projects fund, you all started funding the VB trail to cover the gap there, and you provided funds for the design of Lita. We have time to reappropriate those decisions for the next budget, right? You haven't started to program any debt officially yet with those projects. So there's nothing going to the bond market for the major projects fund at this time, right?
Okay, anyone else at this point? All right, let me, you know, put a capstone on this. We are, have major challenges in front of us. And once again, I'm going to use that fourth term I used, confrontation with reality. We are an aging city in many ways, both in terms of infrastructure and people. You know, we have many financial demands. And some of the reasons we kicked the can was because we had to. You know, when you take a look at what happened to us with COVID, with inflation and things of that nature, the cost of projects increasing by 99%. You know, it's not for lack of effort on our part. It's, you know, you know, it's our confrontation with the reality of trying to, you know, the last budget thing, we, cycle, we just established priorities and came up with the best possible budget we could, given the constraints that we had. But, you know, through adversity, we can find opportunity. And, you know, let me just say this, we have a challenge here. And, you know, the challenge is, you know, simply, we have a situation here where it's a magnitude of complexities that we're dealing in. That this is a multi-pronged, you know, set of problems that we're going to have to confront individually and collectively, you know, to come to an outcome. But, you know, let me say this, one of the main things we have to do today is all agree, because we got so many different organizations involved with this. And that, you know, you know, you know, makes for more complexity also. But if we all can agree on one thing, the ultimate goal is not only to have the aquarium survive, but thrive. If we can all agree on that goal going forward, you know, that's the starting point. It's how to get there. And when you have different organizations, have it in different ways. You know, I think every possibility and thing should be tried. And, you know, to see if it can be done, exhaust all the possible paths that we have. And I'll tell you what, if you go back 40 years ago, it wasn't around that time that Virginia Beach had a water crisis. And we came up with Lake Gaston. And that was a very complex problem of high magnitude. But guess what? Somehow, some way, we got there, didn't we? And I remember when I first got on council, you know, we needed a new Lester Bridge. And we figured out, oh my God, how were we going to do that? But we did. But I think the way, you know, to do it, as we, I agree, that we have four major projects that rise to the top. But once again, you know, we could always figure out a way with effective communication, working together, having the common goal. And, you know, the city has done this before, many times. And we're going to continue to, you know, to confront the budget strike, you know, situation. But once again, you know, I think, once again, the goal of us extending our new revenue sources are going to be part of the overall solution. And that's another avenue that we got to look. But I think one of the things I think we could all agree on, we have to get to yes on this. It's a matter of how. But if we could all agree that we want to get there together, working together. You know, it's a complicated situation. But, you know, you know, the journey of a thousand miles begins with the first step. Okay, and so, anybody else? Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next, we'll be joined by our Director of Emergency Management, David Topzinski. He's going to give city council and the public an overview of what to expect for the 2025 hurricane season.
Give him a second to clear out the background noise for you. I promised mine really short and easier to digest. Seven, seven slides, I got it, too.
Yeah, we'll do tornadoes next time.
Easy, easy.
We can plan for hurricanes, tornadoes.
Take a couple of days' notice.
Our top floor is yours.
Yeah, well, good afternoon. Thank you for having me. This will be a fairly short presentation for you. I just wanted to provide the annual overview of what the forecast looks like for the hurricane season and highlight what, how we've prepared for any storms that might occur. So for the outlook for 2025, NOAA's forecast on a slightly, slightly above-average season. They have 70% confidence in their forecast. It's really a neutral season. It's not El Nino, it's not La Nina. Storm development is going to be driven by surface ocean temperatures and then trade winds. So good chance that they could be developed. It also depends on the, the week that they develop. Because it is being driven by those temperatures, surface temperatures and the trade winds, there is a greater likelihood of it reaching land and not breaking up over the ocean, as you can see. Really, our mantra for the last couple of years has been, regardless of what the forecast is, it's just a forecast. It really only takes one storm to cause significant disruptions and issues for, and challenges for the city. If you look over the past decade, rainfall from tropical storms has been the deadliest hazard associated with tropical weather, not actual hurricanes. What we've also seen over the last several years, from the northeast with Ida to last year with Hurricane Helene, is that impacts, and some of the most severe impacts, are actually hundreds of miles away from the storm center and that point of landfall. Up on the screen, you see the map from Hurricane Helene, and you can see how far-reaching that was. Point of landfall for Helene in Florida was 17 inches of rain. That would be utterly devastating for the city to have to manage that amount of water. When you get into North Carolina, Tennessee, West Virginia, southwest, southwest Virginia, we had 35 and a half inches of rain, and that's hundreds of miles away. So we keep our eye on not just where the storm's going, but where those outer bands go in. Storm remnants have proven to be just as costly for us as the actual storm impacts. Just because it's a subtropical depression or a coastal storm that has, you know, been downgraded, we still can see those days of heavy rain, increased tornado risk, gusty winds that topple trees, cause damage to homes, businesses, and, and power disruptions. So that's what we look at as we're preparing. So what the forecast means for Virginia Beach is, this really serves as a great reminder for our workforce, our public, our businesses, to take a moment, just kind of pause and think about, like, what do I need to do before I'm facing a storm? You know, how would I respond to that? Is my insurance up to date? We learned that with the tornado. We've learned that with flood and events. Is what type of insurance do you have? You know, what does it cover? Does it cover named storms, hail damage, wind damage? Do you have flood insurance? It's usually sold separately, right? What does that look like for both businesses and residential? A big focus is what inland location can you go and stay at if you have to leave your home? If there's an evacuation order, you know, where are you going to go? But also, you know, what if your home's damaged during a storm? You know, what if it's a one-off storm and you have home damage? What friends, family, relatives? Can you go stay out as our hotel chain you have points at or that you would locate to where you could still get to work and go from there? How do you receive official information and updates? You know, we, how do you register for VB Alert? Do you know how to access the social media channels for the, the city? And do you know where the emergency webpage is, where we're going to post that critical information during, during any type of emergency in this city on the website? And then most critically important is who else needs help? You know, do you have a neighbor that might need some help before a storm or immediately after a storm? Friends, family, you know, who's, who, who are you going to help take care of? Is there somebody else you can help them with, help them prepare or pass along information to as, as information's coming out? All this, the storm guide, the hurricane guide, personal preparedness plans, business information, shelter information, it all lives on our emergency preparedness website, which is up on the screen, virginbeach.gov/services/emergencypreparedness. Or can just Google Ready VB or VB Emergency Preparedness will take you right there. So the big topic for this year is federal changes and rebalancing. We all know there is a ton of conversation, rumors, proposals, you name it, work group studies going on, about what federal changes look like, not just for FEMA, which is a huge topic, but also across many federal agencies that support disaster response and recovery. EPA, Department of... EPA, Department of Energy, Army Corps of Engineers, Health and Human Services, and the list goes on and on. So what we want to do here is I just want to provide you what we know is absolutely true. Is we know that the responsibility for managing and paying for incidents is shifting back to the states and localities. The shift really aligns longstanding disaster policies with practices with those longstanding disaster policies where FEMA is only designed to manage 5% of emergencies and incidents. We're talking multi-state, your Catrinas, your Helenes, your Hurricane Sandys, where you have states, communities just utterly devastated and those surrounding eight communities are also impacted and can't support. Another big, another thing we're seeing is downsizing and turnover at FEMA since January has really degraded their readiness. And I take that quote directly from an administrator's mouth. That's not some, my opinion. Since January, their workforce, especially their senior leadership has declined 20% and they're on track to lose 30% of their workforce by January 2026. And that is really across the board with a lot of federal agencies right now. What else we know though, is that federal assistance is still available and can still be requested. It hasn't gone away. But we know that the approval process is being more tightly controlled. It's going to take longer and be more stringent to get those resources in. And the biggest key here is there is, changes are still going to come. We're not done with changes yet. It's still evolving every day. So it's really watching what, what's coming out in the future and how we're going to adapt to that. Impacts to us is we have to continue building our self-reliance and our capabilities for managing larger incidents. We absolutely are going to have to rely on the state and neighboring states for assistance for anything that we can't source for ourselves. If we're going to make a request for federal assistance, we're going to have to do that much earlier and in much greater detail in order to justify the need. And the recovery process is tightening. So that means we're going to have to plan to fund larger portions of any costs. And when I talk about federal assistance, that could be assets, that could be resources and personnel, but that also means reimbursement. And keep in mind, when we're talking federal disaster, they don't come in with the checkbook. You pay their prices and then they reimburse you for it. And if we are putting up the white flag saying we need federal assistance, in addition to being earlier in those details, you know, we're going to have to be able to put that money out there and then wait for reimbursement a little bit longer and more detailed till we get it back. What does the future look like? Honestly, we don't know. Patience and being flexibility are key. But over the last couple of years, we were already moving to improve our self-reliance and our incident management capabilities without knowing this change was coming. There's still a lot for us to do to get to where we need to be. But our region efforts has really put us in the best possible position for now because our mindset has already shifted. We were already looking internally, how do we build resiliency and become self-sustainable to take care of our businesses, our public and our workforce? As our Department of Emergency Management has grown, we've been building these best practices in. So we're not caught off guard by this change. You know, we have to adapt to it and we're going to have to change our practices. But our mindset was already shifted to being self-reliable. So we're in the best position to start navigating these changes. And really that's the future is we have to be patient and willing to have the conversation of what, what these changes mean for the city and how we respond to large incidents. With the, with that fun stuff out of the way. What have we been doing? Well, so for the past year, well, every year, but over the last year, we've done a lot. Our goal is to really build the city's resiliency to prepare and manage incidents of any magnitude, scale, type, whatever we might face. Specifically for hurricane season though, we participated in the senior leadership hurricane exercise up at FEMA Region Three in Philadelphia. I participated in that, worked with Dominion Energy in their pre-hurricane season planning and outlook meeting. We've met with Navy installations, looking for the, the DISC of for how they support civilian authorities coming off base with resources, but also how they would prepare the bases and installations and what resources they would need from us to help keep those bases open, especially with everything going on in the world today, that has become a really high priority. And we've met with the U.S. Coast Guard for the Port of Virginia and hurricane season training and readiness. We've established standby contracts for disaster services, which is equipment and supplies. And then we've established a disaster recovery contract, which is bringing in assistance with financial reimbursement from the federal government. So we have those standby contracts now we can lean back into to help us. Keeping in mind that if, if we're impacted by something major or, you know, our workforce are also impacted by the, by the storm too. So we want to make sure we have those resources to come in under our control and assist and give our, our staff a break. We did do a full-scale exercise. We opened the emergency shelter at Callum High School. That included medical and pet-friendly components, put that through its paces, as you can see in the photos. It was a great exercise. It validated a lot of our changes recently, but it's really kept, was great for all our staff to go through that and work together to coordinate that. And then we recently completed a critical transportation needs or CTN framework, which supports those evacuations. It's how we're going to be able to transport and move people that have no other way of moving to either shelters or evacuation centers or get them to state resources or a state shelter. Some really key projects to highlight though is our EOC modernization project. We're nearing the end of a complete overhaul and upgrade of the emergency operations center, all three rooms on the first floor. Complete upgrade, we built resiliency redundancies, technology upgrade and physical upgrades to the, the building to make sure it consists, it's sustainable and can remain in place, you know, for any number of incidents that might occur. We've added a fully integrated deployable emergency operations center to our equipment cache. This is going to be really key to getting out for any type of incident, whether it's supporting the community and recovery, supporting a long-term command post. Situations like the tornado, being able to deploy out and out in the field and become a resource to that community or parts of the community that need help. And we're nearing the completion of phase one of our RTIS Ezra EM solution. It's undergoing final testing, as you can see from the screenshots. That's given a situational awareness. It's tying multiple city software as an application into one tool, which includes like flood sensors, our roadway conditions, 511, weather, 911, 311, our damage assessment, search and rescue, so on and so on. Instead of having multiple applications and softwares open, it's into one portal now. We can see in real time what our staff out in the streets are seeing. They're able to report back. We have that situational awareness. We can make critical decisions on the fly to make sure the public and our businesses and our workforce are getting the assistance they need immediately as quick as possible. And then with that comes a large public information component. So it allows our communications team to see that information in real time, provide it out to the public. And that we can inform them of shelter locations. If they put their address into the public information tool, it will not only show them the open shelter near them, but how the roadways are impacted. How, what roads are closed, what are blocked, how they can route there and any other information we need. So that is a long time coming and a big, big step forward for us. We did sponsor Crisis Communications Seminar with the Communications Department to help enhance how we communicate with the public during incidents and large events. We launched the watch desk in partnership with ECCS last August. Help us maintain situational awareness across the city and provide rapid notifications to both leadership and the public. They're watching critical infrastructure, public safety and really looking for any disruptions across the city and providing those notifications and helping us get ahead of anything that could be escalating. So we're very proactive and not reactive to it. And we're in the process of completing the city's first ever comprehensive recovery plan. We hope to have that to council in October of this year. Much like last year's emergency operations plan update that occurs every four years. The emergency operations plan is what happens when there's disruptions. How do we manage incidents and emergencies? The recovery plan is what comes next. If, if we've had a major incident, what's our next steps? What does that look like? How do we rebuild from there? How do we get assistance and setting that path forward? So that will be a really big step for the city also. And finally, just real high level, but like to cover the process that we follow when a storm's approaching. The goal here is to make sure you, you as council members have the critical updated information that your residents and your constituents need. They're going to come to you with questions, where are your reliable source to get them that information? Our goal is to always communicate with you early on and provide you with that accurate information, but consistently at a regular basis. Really breaks down to four phases, monitoring every day. My staff monitor the National Hurricane Center reports and the forecast. As a storm starts to develop and form, we'll assign an individual staff member to that storm to monitor its progress. Depending on the forecast and the timing of how quickly the storm develops, we might start either providing our own weather briefings to the workforce or end or leadership briefings up to the city manager and to you. As that confidence increases in the forecast and it's track, it reaches about 50%, we'll start monitoring the excessive rain outlook, looking at possible impacts and what those could look like, how, what we would experience here in the city. And then conduct initial planning meetings, start public messaging with the comms department. And then departments will start doing their storm preparations and going through those processes. Pre-arrival varies 24, 36 hours or so before a storm arrives, maybe 48, we start finalizing those critical decisions. Are we issuing an evacuation order? Do we need to declare a local emergency ahead of time? You know, do we need evacuation centers opened? What's our operating condition look like for the city, not just for the workforce, but for special events? The aquarium, the rec centers, you know, if schools in session in the fall, getting a good handle on that. Where are we getting our additional resources from? Are we requesting mutual aid? Are we activating those emergency contracts? After the storm hits, immediately after it hits, our goal is to evaluate the impacts. Well, what's the life safety challenges? What's the infrastructure look like? And then what is our critical property damages look like? We're going to assess the status of community lifelines, food, water and shelter, housing, public safety, security, and Health and Human Services. Once, we're going to do our damage assessments across businesses and residential and we're going to start our recovery planning. That's what we start deciding, do we need federal assistance? Can we request federal assistance and, and/or other state assistance? And we begin that process there. From there, it goes on forever, kind of just keeps going. So, but that's where we're at in that first 72 hours after a storm is really just try to figure out how our communities are impacted and what help they're going to need so we can make those best decisions of, of where to get it from. That's.
Mr. Mayor, before you ask, before the council goes into questions or discussion, I just want to really thank the council for your support on our public safety teams over the years. I know we always talk about the fire department and Virginia Task Force Two and the search and rescue teams, rightfully so, rightfully so, sir, rightfully so. But it's also important to note that it's not just them, right? You know, like our comms team, our emergency management team, our EMS team, sometimes our police officers get the privilege of going to actually work with communities that are going through the worst situation from hurricanes and tornadoes, right? And a lot of times I know there's a lot of flack that we all get from why are we sending our staff elsewhere to work in these communities that really, to Ms. Henley's point, we haven't been hit by one in a long time. So as much as we can get our staff going through this, like repetitive, like repetitive helping communities through that, it helps us for the worst case scenario ever, if it ever comes to Virginia Beach. So really thank you all for your support for that in terms of your funding and your resources and just even the encouragement of allowing staff to get real life training because it really benefits us from a training standpoint, you know, from what the fire department is able to kind of work with us with the entire emergency response apparatus, emergency management to communications and police at EMS and 911 center. So thank you all for your support.
And let me, you know, just piggyback on that, you know, to run a city of this size, it takes a lot of moving parts. And Dave, you have been doing stellar work. You know, sometimes, you know, you labor in obscurity, but you are so important to what we are and who we are, that to the point where God forbid if something happens, we're going to be ready. And a stellar example of that was when the tornado hit us suddenly four years ago. Nobody was hurt, nobody was, there was no loss of life. And the way that you responded with compassion and empathy to the neighborhoods and the coordinated efforts of, you know, fire police, EMS, emergency services, communications and things. It was a stellar exam, example of efficiency that is just on the ready, that God forbid something happens. And that really makes Virginia Beach the great city it is. Anybody else? Stacy and then Barbara.
Thank you. I used to think for a long time that if we ever got hit with a big one, I was leaving town. But I guess being in this position, I better stick around. So my question is, is there a protocol for when 64 closes and goes in one direction? Or is that strictly a governor's decision?
So the answer is yes and yes. It is a, a governor's decision has to be made on that. The revert, lane reversal is a untried and untested.
They touched it one time.
They tried. So they, they looked at it, they've tried it. There's, it was built with the best of intentions. It, by the time they tried to test it, it was many years later. So they're getting ready to actually revisit that entire lane reversal. There's a lot of concerns with lane reversal. Our recommendation would probably be to hold off on that because when you have everybody leaving like that, it's really hard to get resources into. So, and we all know what the tunnel looks like in one direction with breakdowns, flat tires and people running out of gas and traffic on a Friday afternoon, let alone both sides of it. So there's a lot of, lot of conversations taking place with that. But ultimately that's the governor's decision. If they ask us for our opinion, we'll give them at the time based on what we're seeing. And it just depends on the governor and where they're at at the time.
Before I get to Barbara, it is my understanding that us being, you know, a cul-de-sac, that it would take 96 hours to totally evacuate our area.
So evacuations are extremely challenging. Florida evacuates portions of their state multiple times a year and they have far from 50% compliance with evacuation orders. And they get hit by multiple storms a year. So, you know, as we've been talked about many a times here, you know, we, it's been a long time since we had a storm. That could be good or bad. Hopefully people heed the warning because we don't see them with the frequency of Florida. But yeah, we would need an extended period of time. Our goal by evaluating early on there, those impacts and what those would look like is instead of issuing a blanket evacuation order, we would do community-based evacuations of, based off the model and the flood maps, we would evacuate, you know, the Sandbridge community and, you know, specific community blocks along the oceanfront. Kind of leapfrog like in a phased approach, so we don't overwhelm the system. And we can target that to the, the communities that are most likely to be impacted. And with the goal of moving them inland, but not necessarily out of the area, unless we're getting an absolute worst case scenario, direct strike. And that would be the idea to just move everybody a little bit inland to a safer spot. That's all theoretical as I stand up here and then we'd have to make that decision in the moment based off the storm, the speed of the storm, tides, rainfall amounts, et cetera.
And I think that underscores, underscores the need for us to, you know, get through the bureaucratic malaise and get them out. Okay, Barbara?
I'm a weather watcher. I guess it has something to do with making you live independent on the weather, but I'm not so sure we're not in a very unique situation right now with this heat wave. You know, normally if we're going to have 90 degree days, it'll be one or two days. But this forecast is going entirely through the forecast period. They've got it all the way through next Monday. Are you, do you look at other things as well as hurricanes? Because I think there's going to be some need if this continues like this. Our folks are not going to do too well. I'm thinking particular groups of people. I mean, Josh already has a broken down air conditioner. We're going to have some issues. But I'm also wondering, this is a heck of a way to start the season with a situation like this because that's what happened the year of Matthew. We had so many events. Do you look at everything or?
A hundred percent, absolutely. So we are, hurricanes are a small portion we look at. I joke quite a lot that I'm not the weather forecaster. My focus is not on a hurricane or a tornado. Our focus right now is on those lifeline impacts, whether it's a hurricane, a heat wave, a tornado, a snowstorm, a pandemic. We look at those community services that the public depends on, the safety, security and the resources that we provide to the public and our businesses and our workforce. What are, how are they going to be impacted and how do we protect those, preserve those and/or restore them as quickly as possible? So, yeah, we look at like, it's going to be hot. We had a conversation a week ago, looking at the extended forecast with our critical partners across the city, the health department, health and, or human services, the communications department. What, what does this look like if we have this heat? We have a excessive heat plan framework. We reviewed that, refreshed that. We reviewed that, refreshed that. We've been sent out those notifications, and we're monitoring with the help of the watch desk, we're monitoring for large power outages, water main breaks, sewer breaks that could impact somebody quickly so we could send those resources in, as well as taking care of our workforce, you know, working with human resources, health and safety with them, the fire department. And we've loaned equipment to the fire department so they could staff an extra bus to rehab public safety personnel with our misting fans and stuff like that.
Yeah, letting people know that they can go to cooling centers if, if they are having trouble. I think it's important to let people know that, you know, it's okay.
Yes, absolutely. And those messages have been going out with the communications department, and we talked about that on Friday with them to get that timeline at, always at four blocks. And then they started that Sunday and yesterday and continue.
I hope they're wrong.
Me too, me too.
I don't like the heat.
Hey, Jennifer and Amelia.
Councilwoman Henley's question, can you think of NOAA? So online, they're saying, you know, cuts to NOAA. Can you speak to, is that impacting weather forecasting and the ability to track storms?
So currently, no. That's a very subjective assessment. We have seen no cuts to Wakefield or NOAA in this region. They've been actually expanded. Other areas, yes, absolutely, they're being cut hard. But for us in our region, in, for NWS Wakefield in this area, they've survived the cuts and they've added positions. They're fully funded and stepped right now. They were able to justify everything. So we're in like a unique bubble that we're okay. You know, other sections of the country have very different opinions, but obviously the National Hurricane Center is a pretty high priority for what they do. So we're in a good spot from hurricanes and weather for our area. We supplement that with a private meteorology service that is grant-funded for at least another two years prepaid, Perry Weather. So where the weather service provides that broad forecast, Perry Weather has dials that forecast down to us with 70% accuracy down to, I mean, that community level. What, what does Sandbridge weather look like compared to Shore Drive or the Oceanfront or Diamond Springs? So we have that in our back pocket that we rely on quite heavily. And we use that across the city, including like special events. They'll be able to tell us, you know, Second Street event has got rain in 20 minutes, but 31st Street event is good to go.
Mayor.
Well, thank you so much, Dave. What I was going to mention is what Councilwoman Henley talked about, the cooling stations. You know, I'm watching on the television, and they had like a list of all the cooling stations, Weather Hampton and so forth. I kept looking for ours.
So ours are our open public facilities. We're, we're fortunate enough in the city of Virginia Beach, and we did this exercise study, if you will, last year to validate again. We have with the libraries, and they're open to the public and no cost. They're dynamically spread and throughout the city and all parts of the city. The senior resource center is an open resource. We don't have to open dedicated facilities because we're providing those facilities free of charge to the public every day. A lot of the places are open, which you're calling, what we call a cooling center, is that is they're making up for not having dedicated facilities like that readily available. So they, they're going to, they supplement that across the city with, with a cooling center. We can provide extra if we need them, and that's really looking at those impacts is where messaging is, take advantage of our libraries, take advantage, we have a rec center membership, you know, you know, come in out of the, out of the heat, take a break, there's water fountains, there's vending machines, we have those facilities. If there's an impact now and there's a large power outage, then yeah, we would supplement that with extra, maybe opening other facilities for them, overnight facilities. But what we've seen is even as the hot, hottest times of the day is by nighttime, they drop below those thresholds. So we're, we're tracking. If they're not, then we would consider opening an evacuation center and a support center like that.
Okay, yes, because I kept listening, Virginia Beach Cooling, and the thing I said was, other people who may not know and in the city, they may need to, you know, be informed too.
Well, we have, we have wonderful library facilities and other facilities that are open to the public, and that's what we encourage anybody needing a break from the heat to take advantage of, you know, if, to go in there and air conditioning and water there.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Hey, once again, thanks again. You do a tremendous job and a tremendous service.
Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, the next presentation will be provided by Emily Archer, director of, deputy director of economic development. She's going to come and give city council a briefing about a proposal regarding the old 22nd Street Library Building and next steps as it relates to redeveloping this property.
Welcome.
Afternoon, Mayor, members of city council. As the manager just mentioned, we're going to give you a little background about the RFP and the building and the structure, review the negotiated terms of the sale for the structure, and seek your direction on next steps. This is 302 22nd Street. It's located near the corner of Pacific Avenue and 22nd Street at the resort. It's about a 4,000 square foot building on a .17 acres of land. It's owned Oceanfront Resort District and in Council District Six. It was originally constructed in 1927 by the Chesapeake and Potomac Telephone Company. It was used as the Virginia Beach Princess Anne County Library for the longest period of its history, and is commonly referred to as the Old Library Building. It's currently used for storage by our beach events contractor. The multi-story exterior brick section of this structure is considered to be architecturally significant and was listed in the city's 1992 Architectural Survey. We did conduct a pre-renovation asbestos-led survey in 2021 and found there was hazardous materials in the basement. It's currently closed off and people are not permitted to enter the basement of the So there's about $1 million in estimated capital repairs to the building and probably about 1.6 at a minimum that would be needed to bring it to any kind of new use. In 2023, Public Works Real Estate started receiving formal interest and purchasing from the surrounding landowners. Staff came to you in 20, in September 2023 in open session and received direction to issue a request for proposals on the property for sale and adaptive reuse. We issued an RFP in January 2024. It was open for 60 days, advertised in the pilot and all the public requirements for posting. We received two responses for the same development, one from a landowner, one from a developer for a joint kind of development. There were no adaptive reuse of the structure received. We did form a review committee that met several times on it and briefed council and closed session about request to negotiate and regarding the preservation of the structure. So the disclosures of the developer that made the proposal, 21st Street Properties LLC, so the proposals for everything in yellow, the developer is the owner of the 21st Street Seafood Raw Bar on the corner of 21st Street and Pacific Avenue, Mr. Tony Schmidt. You can see his supporting team below there. So the landowner, this other joint member of this proposal is Lily Inc. They're everything in purple on the map on the right of the landowner. There's currently a, the 21st Street developer has a ground lease for those parcels for this, for this deal. Then you can see the city parcel outlined in red. The development proposal is for an eight-story, 131 multifamily condo unit. There are ground floor restaurant and retail proposed and a four-story parking deck with 258 spaces kind of sandwiched in the middle of the building. The estimated capital investment is 96 to 100 million dollars. You can see a rendering on the right and kind of an elevation of how that would look. There, there are no public parking spaces proposed with this parking garage. We did ask the developer, they were not really interested at this time. You can kind of see, this is the ground floor proposal, so you can see the ground floor of what that garage would look like and center surrounded by the development. I want to point out a couple of things. The dashed rectangular box is where the 302 22nd currently sits on the site. You can kind of see how it sits back off of 22nd Street a little bit, and the developer has stated they are not able to preserve the structure for a couple of reasons. If you can imagine that development cut out around that structure to preserve it, an eight-story development constructed close proximity to that structure would likely damage it during construction. Also, you can see how it kind of eats into that garage space, which kind of makes the garage non-functional, and they've stated they lose kind of too many units to really make it financially feasible for them. Also going on in this image is, you can see a dashed red line on the bottom along Pacific Avenue. That's where the current curb line of Pacific Avenue sits. You'll see how they've set the building back. At the very bottom, there's a little circle, you can see the through lane, the combined through and left turn lane of Pacific Avenue. This is a major congestion point for the resort traffic, having that combined through lane and not a dedicated left turn lane to flush all the traffic out on its own lane, left turn lane, onto 22nd Street and out of the resort. This development would allow for the city to purchase the needed land for that right-of-way expansion and get that turn lane in exchange for the library 302 22nd Street property. We did explore if we could at least save the facade of the building and kind of incorporate it into the facade of the new development. You can see what that looks like as a rendering on the left. Other cities do this. You can see a precedent image in Washington, D.C. We did brief the Historic Preservation Board in December last year, and they did not feel the historic integrity would be preserved by doing so. The developer has agreed, however, to erect a plaque on the exterior of the, of the development that describes the historic significance of this building in Virginia Beach. We did conduct a preliminary fiscal impact of the development. In the box here on the left, you can kind of see the 20-year estimated total of that. So this accounts for estimated investment over a 20-year period. The net improvement value is about 65 million in year one with a 3% annual escalation. It accounts for the real estate, the condos, the garage, the retail, but not the restaurant because there's already a restaurant there, so that was a wash. You can see the net present value of about 10.6 million that is estimated, approximately about, it'd be about $650,000 in annual estimated revenue. On the alternative on the right to keep it as a currently city-owned asset with the estimated annual expenses and the capital expenses that are needed at around 112,000 per year, and the needed capital investment at about a million, escalating that over 20 years, you can see about 2.8 million obligation that would be needed in the same 20-year period. So the proposed sale terms that are for your consideration, the city parcel, because it's off, Pacific Avenue is assessed at $75 a square foot, and the frontage on that we would need for the right-of-way and the turn lane is assessed at 105 square foot. That's about a $65,000 difference in favor of the city, but the terms negotiated are that the city would be responsible for any underground sewer remediation. There could potentially be an underground storage tank for their due diligence would be needed. The developer, however, would be responsible for any building remediation such as the asbestos and its demolition itself. So in order to close, the terms, the developer must obtain site plan approval and provide the city with evidence of reasonable financing. City would have to approve any kind of, approve the project as it's currently proposed without any changes, and then post-closing construction would have to start within 12 months. There is a term that the developer should not demolish the building until construction actually commences and they have their permits in hand and is ready to start construction. And if for something, if for some reason the proposed development changes, they would have to come back to the city to seek our approval for that. So before they would touch that structure. So the next steps, if council chooses, it would be a public hearing and public comments next week potentially, and a super majority vote the following on the, to authorize the development and execution of the sale documents. Any questions?
Hey, questions, Worth?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Ms. Archer, for the presentation and for your work on this. As well as staff, and this is a major intersection at the entrance and the exit to our resort on 21st and 22nd Street at Pacific Avenue. And to me, this project accomplishes a lot of things that I think we should strongly consider to the good, and that is the right-of-way acquisition that allows us to add that turn lane going west outside of the, leaving the resort going west on 22nd Street at a fair price. This also, this project does not require any city incentive money or parking deck or other, and then the developer is paying a market price, if you will, as you pointed out here, for the building. So I don't see anything wrong with this. They've got to perform, of course, but this is, I think, a good project. It will really, this is a really important intersection at the resort that right now needs some TLC, needs some love. Thank you.
Anybody else? At this point, anybody object to moving forward? Let's do it.
Thank you.
All right, so here's the mayor, members of council, the last and final revision of the day.
Will be from Caitlin Alcock regarding your pending planning items for your next upcoming council meetings. For your July 8th council meeting. All right. Caitlin, it's yours.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. As the manager just stated, I'm here to run, run through the planning items that will be on your July 8th agenda. So there are a total of 14 items on the agenda, however, there are several that include multiple requests within one project. So the first three items, items one, two, and three, they are interrelated requests. However, since they involve different property owners and parcels, I will run through them individually. So looking first at item one, this is a modification of conditions for class for religious use for a portion of 2641 Princess Anne Road in District Two. The applicants are seeking a modification of conditions to remove 2.3 acres from the current conditional use permit associated with Turning Point Church and ministries located at 2641 Princess Anne Road. The church is currently situated on a nine-acre parcel. The remaining 6.83 acres that would remain under that CUP will include the existing church building, a modular unit shed, and the existing parking lot. The church does intend to sell the 2.3 acres to Franklin Group Companies LLC to be incorporated into their proposed development to the west. Should the modification of conditions be approved, the church would continue to meet and exceed the minimum three-acre lot area requirement for religious uses as identified in Section 240.1 of the zoning ordinance. Many of the conditions associated with the original conditional use permit for the religious use would remain unchanged with this request. Staff is, however, recommending a revision to Condition Four to state that the current access on Princess Anne Road shall be removed and a permanent access installed on George With Drive within 24 months of council approval. Based on the wording of previous approvals, the access on Princess Anne Road was always meant to be temporary, however, no timeframe was established for its removal. At this time, the church doesn't have any specific plans for where that access on George With Drive would, would be, but that specific location would be reviewed for conformance with city standards during site plan approval. Item two is a request by Keelingwood Apartments LLC. This is for a modification of proffers for property located off of Princess Anne Road and Alley Nicole Circle, again, in District Two. As many of you may recall, back in October of 2023, city council approved a modification of proffers to expand the existing 15.7-acre Southern Pine Apartments to allow for the addition of a 6.2-acre parcel to accommodate an additional 176 multifamily dwellings. The applicant now seeks to separate the proffer agreement applicable to the original phase known as Southern Pine, and then the proposed development, the Siloet Southern Pine. While the developments will have the same property management company, they will be subject to a separate proffer agreement and function independently. And item three, this is a request by Franklin Group Companies LLC to conditionally rezone property off of Princess Anne Road and Alley Nicole Circle from conditional A18 apartment district and AG1 and AG2 agricultural districts to conditional A18 apartment district with a workforce housing overlay. As with the previous items, this is also located within District Two. The properties are located both within the less than 75 decibel and the 65 to 70 decibel noise contours and is partially situated within the interfacility traffic area or ITA. As proffered, all residential units are located outside of both the ITA and the 60, 65 to 70 decibel noise zone. As depicted on the conceptual site plan seen on the slide here, the additional 2.3 acres will include the existing stormwater pond for the church, which will be upgraded to serve both the church and the proposed development. And there's also one additional. And there's also one additional three-story building proposed, which will contain 24 units. With the additional 2.8, 2.3 acres gained from the church property, the total development would be 8.56 acres. At a density of 18 units per acre, the site could be developed with a total of 154 units. Section 2106 of the zoning ordinance does allow for a 30% density bonus above what is permitted in the underlying district if at least 17% of the total dwelling units are designated as workforce housing. The 30% density bonus would allow for an additional 46 units in this case, bringing the maximum number of units permitted to 200. With this proposal, the applicant is proffering a total of 77 units or 38.5% of the units for workforce housing. Since the workforce housing overlay cannot overlap with the ITA area, the overlay, overlay line will follow the ITA line, and it will only include the eastern portion of the property, so that's the area outlined in yellow on the slide. With regard to the process for establishing the maximum affordable rents for the workforce housing units, the developer does not establish those rents. That is something that is determined by the city's Housing Advisory Board, and that is based on data from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. That is something that the Housing Advisory Board adopts annually, but for this specific project or any workforce housing project, the maximum rate would be determined closer to the time of project completion and when the units will be closer to being available for rent. Also, while it's not proffered, the applicant does anticipate having a total of 98 one-bedroom units, 88 two-bedroom units, and 14 three-bedroom units. The proposed development will include a total of seven buildings, one clubhouse with a height of 32 feet 7 inches, and then six multifamily dwellings, or residential buildings. Four of the residential buildings, which are located closer to Princess, Princess Anne Road, will be three stories with a maximum height of 48, 45 feet, while the other two residential buildings that are off of Princess Anne Road and closer to George With, those will be five stories for a maximum height of 55 feet. Since the A-18 Apartment District limits height, building height to 35 feet, the applicant is seeking a deviation to this restriction to allow a maximum height of 45 feet for the three-story buildings and 55 feet for the four-story buildings. As with the previous application, a deviation is also requested for the 30-foot front yard setback from George With Drive. The building closest to George With, kind of on the bottom of the screen there, it is within 20 feet of the George With right-of-way, so they need that deviation from that 30-foot, 30-foot front yard setback. The main entrance to the development is still proposed from George With Drive with an emergency access point on Princess Anne Road. As you may recall, Princess Anne Road in this area is considered access-controlled and therefore kind of direct access for the public was not desired for this project. Regarding parking, a development of this size would typically require 363 parking spaces. The applicant, however, is proposing 329 spaces for the development, which is a ratio of 1.65 spaces per unit. To address this reduction, a parking study was submitted to the zoning administrator in accordance with Section 203 of the zoning ordinance. As approved by the zoning administrator, the data that was provided in the study did support the 329 spaces for the development. Additionally, the applicant will be providing 11 bicycle spaces as required by the ordinance, six of which will be covered spaces. Since the property is partially located within the Inter Facility Traffic Area, the applicant did appear before the Transition Area Inter Facility Traffic Area Citizens' Advisory Committee in May of this year. The committee did find the proposal to be inconsistent with the surrounding areas specifically related to the proposed density and building heights, and as such voted to oppose the proposal by a recorded vote of seven to two, and they also drafted a letter detailing those concerns. The applicant also appeared before the Joint Review Process Group to discuss the project. This was also in May of 2025. Since no residential units are proposed within the ITA area, the group found the proposal to be in compliance with Article 18. There was one speaker in opposition at the Planning Commission hearing who noted concerns with the proposed density and overall incompatibility with the surrounding area. Ultimately, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval of Items One, Two, and Three by a vote of five to four. The next three items include requests for a rezoning conditional use permit and street closure for property located at the northeast corner of Dam Neck Road and Holland Road. Again, this is within District Two. The applicant is requesting to rezone two parcels north of Wendy Willow Court from R-75 Residential District to I-1 Light Industrial District and a conditional use permit in order to operate a battery energy storage system facility on the site. To accommodate the proposed facility, a street closure for Wendy Willow Court is also required. This site is located in the 70 to 75 decibel noise zone, the greater than 75 decibel noise zone and the accident potential to, potential zone two. The site is also encumbered by a Navy restrictive easement and lies within the Special Economic Growth Area Three, which is South Oceana. Of the four parcels, only two are currently zoned I-1 Light Industrial. Since battery energy storage facilities are only permitted in industrial districts with a conditional use permit, those two are 7.5 parcels, which are shown in red on the slide there, must be rezoned to I-1. The conditional use permit is to construct an 80-megawatt alternating current battery storage system facility. It will consist of battery containers and associated equipment, all within a secure fenced-in compound. As required by Section 225.02 of the zoning ordinance, the applicant has provided a 100-foot setback with Category Six landscaping around the entire perimeter of the facility. As a majority of the site is heavily wooded, the applicant does intend to retain as much of the existing vegetation as possible to meet that buffering requirement and then add in supplemental landscaping as needed. The applicant is also proposing an eight-foot-tall privacy fence to surround the perimeter of the storage area, and that's what's seen in white there. The batteries are nine feet and five inches in height and expected to be charged and discharged once per day. The facility will store electricity from the grid during off-peak hours and then dispatch the electricity onto the grid during peak demand. As required in Section 22.5.02, the applicant did submit a decommissioning plan with this request, which did state that the intended operation is anywhere from 25 to 40 years. When this was heard by the Planning Commission, they did recommend two additional conditions. The first would require a bond or a letter of credit to be submitted that would cover the cost of decommissioning the facility, and then to reiterate the need for an emergency response plan to be reviewed and approved at the time of site plan review. As stated previously, the applicant is also requesting the closure of Wendy Willow Court. The closure area is just under 30,000 square feet. They are seeking to incorporate that area into the project site, and then will just utilize that access from Dam Neck Road as a private access. Similar to Princess Anne Road, this portion of Dam Neck Road is also access-controlled, so they will be required to submit a one-foot no ingress egress easement along the front edge of the site except for that access point. A viewers' meeting was held in April of this year, and it was determined that the closure is acceptable, subject to the necessary public utility easements and drainage easements over existing infrastructure. Staff has not received any opposition to this request, and the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval with those noted changes as previously mentioned. Items seven and eight. Yes.
Looks like these parcels combined acreage, I'm just going to guess is over 10 acres. When, and I'm not sure if it's clear in the staff report or not, but the percentage acreage that they intend to leave the tree canopy versus what they're intending to do would be helpful to, to know and to accentuate.
Yeah, we can certainly get that, and I thought I had that, but.
It looks like a significant.
It's a significant portion, really, it's, oh, here it is.
I think it's really important.
All of the green here is intended to remain forested, so in terms of the view from Dam Neck or Holland, you really shouldn't see much with that existing vegetation on site.
Thank you.
All right, items seven and eight, this is, includes a conditional rezoning request along with a modification of conditions for 2301 Newstead Drive in District Five. These requests were deferred at your June 17th hearing at the request of the applicant. So as a quick reminder, the church is requesting to modify their CUP to remove a 2.44-acre portion of the property in order to sell that to CFTNV Developments LLC. With the sale of the property, the church would sit on approximately two and a half acres, so they would be requesting a deviation to that three-acre minimum lot area requirement for religious uses. CFTNV Developments then intends to further subdivide that 2.44 acres to create two parcels, each of which would be developed with a fast-food restaurant. To mitigate any impacts to the residences to the south, they are proposing a Category Four landscape buffer as well as a privacy fence along that southern property line, and then they've included a proffer that the dumpsters would not be emptied except for between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. They are proposing a right-of-way dedication along Newstead. This is to accommodate a right-turn lane and new sidewalks along Newstead. They're also proposing an eight-foot-wide side path along Nemo Parkway. This is in accordance with the recommendations of the Active Transportation Plan, and the required parking is met on each of the individual sites. This just shows some renderings of the proposed Panda Express. They do not have a user identified for that other restaurant, but the elevations for that would be similar in terms of color scheme and materials. There were four speakers in opposition at the Planning Commission hearing, and staff did receive one letter of opposition noting concerns with traffic, reduced property values, and noise. Ultimately, the Planning Commission, their motion to recommend approval was split by a vote of five to five, therefore that recommendation moved forward as one for denial. Item nine is a conditional rezoning request for property located at 928 Diamond Springs Road and 1025 Heatherwood Drive. This is in District Nine. So this is related to the Cypress Point Shopping Center. It does not, however, include the out parcels, so you can kind of see the outline of the rezoning area there in red. So the proposed development would include up to 365 residential units for an overall density of 27.2 units per acre. Of those 365 units, 343 are proposed to be multifamily, and then 22 are proposed to be townhomes. While the majority of the shopping center is proposed to be demolished, they are going to retain approximately 21,000 square feet, so the white buildings shown kind of in that northeast corner will be retained with this development. They're also proposing to construct a new three-story, 27,000-square commercial office building on the site, in addition to two multifamily buildings. To accommodate this request, the applicant did submit a parking study to the zoning administrator to provide 676 parking spaces rather than the 866 required by the ordinance. Based on the mix of proposed uses and the peak demand for each use, it was determined that at peak time, the demand would only be that 676 spaces, so the zoning administrator was comfortable supporting that reduction. The applicant is requesting a deviation to the maximum lot coverage with this request to allow a lot coverage of 80.2% rather than the 75% max established by the ordinance. While this is above what is permitted by the ordinance, it does represent a 6.1% reduction over the existing impervious cover. As seen on the landscaping plan shown on the slide here, the site does have additional landscaping proposed throughout to include parking lot landscaping and then Category Four landscape buffers along the north and east property lines adjacent to the residential districts. Additionally, the applicant is proposing to retain the mature trees along Diamond Springs and Wesleyan Drive. They are also proposing to enhance the pedestrian network to include 500, more than 500 feet of new sidewalk along Fall Brook Bend and then numerous internal pedestrian connections. The image on the slide here shows the proposed multifamily buildings, which are to be four stories in height and then increased to five stories at the corners. The buildings will be 70 feet at their tallest point. I will note, there is no max height within the B4 district unless you're within 100 feet of a residential district. The applicant is also proffering that 7% of the units proposed will be designated as attainable housing units, so those are units that will be available to households with an annual income not to exceed 100% of the area median income, and that designation would be for a period of at least 10 years. The 22 townhomes proposed with this request are proposed to be three stories with a maximum height of 40 feet. As I mentioned, in the B4 district, if you're within 100 feet of residential, the max height is 35 feet, so they are requesting a deviation to allow the 40-foot height with this request. Staff is supportive of this request. In this case, you have the Cypress Point North Park that lies adjacent to the townhome, so it provides additional buffer from the residential dwellings to the north and east of the site. And this just shows the elevations for the commercial office building. Like I mentioned, that's proposed to be three stories, commercial on the first floor and then office on the upper floors. And then while the applicant does intend to retain a portion of the existing shopping center, they will improve the exterior to match the proposed new buildings. We did have one individual speak in opposition to this request at the Planning Commission who noted concerns about the current poor condition of the shopping center and wanting to see, see it improved, so we did let him know that even the portion that is to be retained, it will be improved with this request. We also had one speaker in support at the Planning Commission hearing. Ultimately, the commission did vote to recommend approval for this application by unanimous vote. Item 10 is a request for a conditional use permit. This is for a childcare education center at 4013 Indian River Road within District Two. The eight-acre site is zoned R-15, and the applicant intends to operate a childcare education center within the existing church on the site. They're proposing to have no more than 18 children with the expected ages of six weeks to four years old. Proposed hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. A total of three employees are anticipated for the use. They are not proposing any exterior changes to the building, but that yellow box there is showing a 50-by-15-foot cleared area on the site that they are going to use for an outdoor play area. And there is adequate parking provided on site. Staff has not received any opposition, and the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval on their consent agenda. Item 11 is another CUP request. This is for an adult, yes.
Are they, are they working in conjunction with the church, or are they leasing space from the church?
It would be, so it's a separate operator, but they are working in conjunction with the church. I don't know if there's a lease or not, but I can get that information for you, but it's not the church's daycare. The applicant is operating a daycare in the church, if that makes sense.
Can we find out what the relationship was?
Absolutely. Item 11, this is another conditional use permit request. This is for an adult daycare facility at 464 South Independence Boulevard. This is within the Holland Office Park in District Three. So the site currently contains two one-story buildings designated as Building A and Building B. They were designed to accommodate office warehouse-type uses. The facility will operate within two units within Building A totaling about 2,800 square feet. The facility will provide day support services for up to 42 individuals aged 18 and above with intellectual disabilities, designed to enhance daily living skills and promote greater independence. No exterior changes are proposed with this request.
It looked like there was five employees anticipated. Do you know if there would be, and it's, it's okay to get back to me on this, just curious what the ratio is between, so I can't imagine, or maybe it is, five, five at any one particular time, that I'm thinking some of them may be administrative staff. And so I'm just wondering what the ratio of the people they serve and the staff on site will be, and, and then how is that ratio calculated for best practices? In other words, is, do you have, does the city have required, or is it involved with the licensure? I'm exposing, these are some of the things I don't know a lot about, I'm learning, but does the licensure come from the Commonwealth, I'm, I'm imagining? And then how are those facilities reviewed in terms of their license? And do they have onsite visits? And, and the reason I'm asking is for, for the reasons that are obvious to everyone who's listening. I'm just thinking about the people they serve, adults with, with disabilities. I think it said, I thought it was a senior daycare, what they called it, which, adult daycare center, so they're adults at any level, and, and I know that we need services for people with disabilities. I'm just thinking about ensuring that these facilities that we are approving through a conditional use permit are of high quality and that the safety and welfare of the people who are being cared for there and the certain, being provided services there is, is prioritized. I'm sure that it is, I would just like to know, I mean, I know that that's part of this conditional, that's why we have a conditional use permit for this. I'm just wondering if this is an opportunity for me to kind of learn some more information about it. This is kind of an out-of-the-way place, I'm familiar with it, and so in the event that we were not dealing with an operator who was above board, it would be a place where people wouldn't notice necessarily, and that's why I'm asking these questions.
No problem, we will absolutely get you that information.
Amelia?
Yes, I just wanted to mention part of this, our Department of Humans and. Our Department of Human Services will be, because they know every one of the different areas, will be looking into something like that. So they can ensure that everything works out correctly. So we do have Department of Health and Human Services.
Thank you. All right, so typical hours of operation for this facility are proposed to be 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. As was previously stated, five employees are anticipated. They are able to meet the parking requirements on the site, and staff has not received any opposition. The Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval on their consent agenda. Item 12, this is a CUP for short-term rental for 521 22nd Street in District Six. The applicant is seeking to operate a four-bedroom short-term rental within a 2,800-square-foot townhome. A total of four off-site parking spaces are required, two of which can be accommodated off-site. And the applicant has submitted an intent-to-lease off-site parking agreement for two off-site spaces within the 25th Street parking garage.
Quick question. I don't know if very many people...
Could walk in that straight line, quarter mile away? And I'm just wondering, as we continue to approve these, we really ought to be looking at walking distance, not as a crow flies? And I know that's a policy decision. I don't know what a walking distance would mean, but I would expect that it would be significantly longer than just a quarter mile. I just, I'm starting to become uncomfortable with these, especially considering we're paying to subsidize, you know, and pay for public parking at the resort. So if they're starting to use our parking spaces and garages, I've just, I want to be welcoming and understanding the STRs, but this is, this is a little too much for me.
Understood. There were no prior zoning complaints associated with this, no previous advertisements. Staff did not receive any opposition, and the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval by eight to one. All right, the last two items, these are two CUP requests for short-term rentals, one at 927 Pacific Avenue, Unit B, and then another at 905 Pacific Avenue, Unit A. So the applicant is seeking to operate one one-bedroom unit and one two-bedroom unit within the Pacific Place condominiums. As you're all aware, Pacific Place has 56 units, 31 of which have previously approved CUPs for short-term rental use. Each unit is only required to have one parking space based on that historical exemption granted by the ordinance. There are previous zoning complaints associated with both units. However, those violations were resolved when the advertisements were changed to a 30-day rental for each. We have not received any opposition, and the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval of each item by nine to zero.
I think that's District Five.
Yes. Did I say six? Yes, it's District Five. District Five. All right, Mayor, that concludes my briefing, and I'll stand by if there's any more questions.
Any other questions? Let me just say, the repurposing of Diamond Springs is a very effective way of, you know, remedying a underperforming strip mall that pop up all over. And as we run out of land, we got to use a little bit of imagination going forward. Where does Kemp's River, is that on the radar at all?
I can get you an update on that. I feel like I saw an email not too long ago about it.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Director Kerry McHulp is going to come and give council update.
I do know that they're getting ready to kick off their design and submittals to our Development Services Center. We have a meeting scheduled later this week or next week to talk with their design review, I'm sorry, their engineering design company to make sure that their submittal is ready whenever it comes into us. So I would expect if the first submittal is made within the next month, that we'll likely see approval in the next six to eight months of their site plan.
Okay, thank you very much. But you know, once again, it's a great vehicle. Josh.
You know, that's obviously in my council district, and it's, you know, right on a major thoroughfare and two major thoroughfares. And when, when the developer first approached me about the prospects of this, it's been something I've been keeping my eye on for quite some time because it's been a, it's been a shopping center that's had a lot of negative activity, a lot of high vacancy rate. And when they came to me, I showed them that Kemp's River example that you and Sheriff Holcomb, when he was a council member, kind of helped shepherd through the neighborhood and the community. I, you know, and I showed them that model that y'all had created in terms of community engagement. I gave them a list of every single phone number I could think of for, you know, in the neighborhood and civic leaders and community members to talk to. And I suggested to them that, you know, affordable, attainable workforce housing ought to be a component because that's a priority for the council. And I give them credit because they came, they came at this situation saving, saving tree canopy, creating sidewalks, reducing impervious, saving some of the retail, adding bodies and eyeballs and lights and all sorts of things to make sure that the property was safer than what it was. And, and, and they, and on the workforce housing component or the attainable housing component, they didn't ask for any density bump whatsoever. They did that, they did that 7% because they recognized that was the right thing to do, and it was a council and a city priority to do. So, so I, you know, and there are, there are objections, you know, from people in the neighborhood regarding, you know, some height and architectural concerns and others. But, but on the whole, I really, I just want to commend not just the applicant, but the planning staff and the neighborhood participants in engaging in a productive discussion about this area.
Yes, and I also know Boyd Homes because they have homes and Nexus in our area, right off of Baker and Newtown on that other side. And they've been very good with what they have and the same wealth established. And also they have those smaller mixed use on a corner. So they come with high recommendations, so I'm glad to see that.
Agreed. Patrick, moving on. We got one more?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, before council goes into council discussion or comments, I'd like for Director Hirschman to come and share some exciting news regarding everybody's favorite project, the VB Trail.
Nothing like good news. We could use some.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Yes, considering all the fiscal challenges that we have and we talk about a lot, I have some really exciting news today. The Commonwealth Transportation Board approved the next round of smart-scale funding that included $23.8 million for Phase Four of the Virginia Beach Trail, which will 100% fund it with no local match required.
Can you repeat that?
This is great news. This is a section of trail that goes from London Bridge to Bird Neck that ties into the trail down at the oceanfront with the Holloway Loop. Really what we have now is a lot of momentum. Phase One, as of July 1st, fully funded, under design, includes a pedestrian bridge over Independence right past Town Center. Phase Four, fully funded. Phase Five is built. And Phase Three, I believe, we're going after a grant in the upcoming federal cycle. So a lot of momentum, a lot of excitement, but that just occurred earlier today. Thank you for your support. Thank you for Public Works. They put this in just about two years ago, just seeing how it would score. And it scored so high, it actually got funded. So a lot of people made this happen.
Clint Eastwood once... Clint Eastwood once said in a movie, "Make my day, you made our day."
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, council comments. Anybody? Okay, we'll go with Michael, and then, and then we'll get into quotes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment to just discuss Pride of the Beach. It occurred on Sunday at Hampton's Park. It was a really outstanding day. There were thousands of folks from all over the region and outside of the region who were there to see, among other, among other people, the headliner Big Frida, who delivered, was really, really extraordinary. I want to just recognize our partners at Hampton's Pride, who, as always, did another really exceptional job to the leadership of the professionals at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, specifically Nancy Hellman, the director, Bill Kelly, who was always there for us. And I want to call out as well Teresa Diaz, who has been a decades-long champion for LGBTQ inclusion as part of our Convention and Visitors Bureau portfolio. Even when city leadership didn't embrace that concept and even when resources were slim, Teresa was leading the charge. And she was out there again, leading the parade and other things that were part of the day and serving the community. So thanks to Teresa, thanks to all of them. Not finished, giving recognitions. I want to give a shout out to the police department and the sheriff's office who were there to provide security and safety and make sure that not only were all the participants safe, but that they knew they were safe and they knew that they were being protected in their celebration there. And I want to just thank Councilmember Worth Remick, who was there and joined in the parade and said a few words and has always been there. Councilman Green joined us as well with his wife, which is fantastic. And I know that many of the other council members were with us in spirit as well. And so it was a really, really great program. It's building momentum. The investment has paid off. As a member of the community who grew up here, you know, I kind of had goosebumps standing in the park and looking at, looking out at all the people and the pride flags that were along the boardwalk and thinking about all the people who came before us who really could never imagine that that was something that was going to happen here in Virginia Beach. And yet, as a community together, we made it happen. And I think it really changes the culture in a positive way for our city. So thanks to all involved.
Thank you, Cap.
Thank you, Councilman Bellucci. I really appreciate that. My wife and I, we truly enjoyed it. Just a couple of things, announcements. We've got two big initiatives that are taking place in District Seven. One is going to be my town hall meeting tomorrow, Salem High School. And I've got a special guest that's going to be there. So you may want to show up. That's going to be Salem High School tomorrow, starting at 6:00 p.m. And that's our second town hall meeting. The second, I think, big push for District Seven is cultural arts, is having a public arts dedication that's going to take place at City View Park. If you don't know where City View Park is at, you should come out Saturday, June 28th. That's going to be at 10:00 a.m. This is in connection with Cultural Affairs Department. And we're going to be unveiling some, just the incredible artwork that's going to add a new dimension to District Seven. So we're excited. Art is a part of expression. So town hall meeting, public art unveiling, okay?
Good stuff. Okay, folks, moving on. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemption from open meetings allowed by Section 2.237 11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Legal matters: consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice pursuant to Section 2... Yeah, I'm sorry.
Any part of the Juneteenth that we had over at the Vibe Creative District. Again, our district rep and board member, Worth Remick, came. And we were so pleased to have the mayor come and do a proclamation to the Virginia African-American Culture Center for our fourth annual Juneteenth event in collaboration with the Department of Cultural Affairs and VB Gigs in the Vibe Creative District. And then I left to go all the way to Franklin because now we have a relationship there where I took part on their panel. And one of the big words that came up was hope. So I was able to tell them about helping all people excel, which we have here as well. So that's it.
Positive energy at the Vibe. That was really kind of cool.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.337 11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Legal matters: consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.237 11A8. Atlantic Park collection system: legal matters: consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or constituents pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect a negotiation or litigating posture of a public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A7. At Atlantic Park, Branch versus City of Virginia Beach, Holloway versus City of Virginia Beach. Publicly held property: discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect bargaining positions or negotiating strategies of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A3, District Six. And personnel matters: discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performances, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A1. And that's council, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. So I have a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Bellucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Canning?
Aye.
Commissioner Henley?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall-Damon?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowman?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are recessed into closed.
Hold this meeting back in order and I ask for a motion to approve the close session.
Second.
Governor Litchi.
Aye.
Governor Cummings.
Aye.
Governor Nusantara.
Aye.
Governor Jackson.
Aye.
Governor Ball. Allen.
Aye.
Aye.
Governor Schumer.
Aye.
Governor Schumer.
Aye.
Governor Schumer.
Thank you all very much. We are returned.